...at tonight's January 22 meeting of the Berkeley Unified School District Board of Education. I'd like to call this meeting to order this evening at 7:14 PM. Ms. Chavez, did you already have the opportunity to give your spill? Okay, would you like to go ahead and do that? Okay. Good evening. Este mensaje será repetido en español. I just want to give you a quick overview about public comment this evening. After a few procedural items, the board will hear 30 minutes of public comments. So if you have submitted your card already, thank you. We are not accepting any more cards. If you are online now and wish to participate in public comment, please raise your hand now so we can queue you up. The board president will set tonight, this evening's time, at one or two minutes per speaker. They adjust the time for anyone who has any speech needs. And she will also prioritize students. So if you are a student who turned in a card, be sure you had indicated that you are a student so we can prioritize your card accordingly. When you are speaking, you will hear a beep when your time is up. And please finish your sentence, but try not to speak beyond that time. We want to give as many people as possible an opportunity to participate this evening. Thank you. Bienvenidos. Si estás aquí para participar en el periodo de comentario público, favor de entregar tu tarjeta ya. Y si estás en línea, favor de levantar tu mano ya. La presidenta priorizará a los estudiantes esta noche y dará uno o dos minutos por orador, dependiendo la cantidad de oradores y ajusta el tiempo a quienes necesitan más tiempo o traducción, otros adaptaciones especiales. Cuando se haya acabado su tiempo, se va a escuchar un beep. Por favor, termine su oración, pero trate de no sobrepasar su tiempo ya que queremos escuchar parte de mayoría posible del público. Muchas gracias. Thank you so much. If you're familiar with our board meetings, you know that that was a little bit earlier than when we typically have that update. And the reason being is because we have quite a number of speaker cards that are speaking on the same topic tonight. And when we do that, or when we have that, rather, we typically give about five minutes for each of those items. And so what I want to do is give you enough time to organize yourselves and determine both for our students and for our adults who are speaking on this specific topic, to give yourself some time to organize yourself. So you will have five minutes, and you all can determine as a group who will speak for your group within those five minutes that you will be given. So again, this is a little bit out of order, but I want to give you some time to organize yourselves so that you don't have to do that at the podium, okay? All right, at this time, we will continue with our agenda, and I will entertain a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
I'll make a motion.
It has been moved by Director Korn and...
I'll second.
Seconded by Director Vasudev. All those in favor, please signify with a sign of aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Opposers have the same sign. Abstentions. Hearing none, the motion passes and this evening's agenda is approved. At this time, I'd like to call on Vice President Chang, who will report out from closed session.
Thank you. Meeting was called to order at 6:05. And with regard to 3.1.1, Student A versus BUSD, the board heard an update and provided direction. With regard to item 3.1.2, OAH case number, as you can see on the agenda, the board voted unanimously in favor of district council's recommendation via motion by Director Shinaskey, seconded by Director Vasadev. With regard to item 3.2, the board voted unanimously for the district settlement recommendation via motion by Director Shinaskey, seconded by President Brown. With regard to item 3.3, collective bargaining, the board heard an update and provided direction. Thank you so much.
And thank you to you, Vice President Chang. At this time, please help me in welcoming our Superintendent Anikiya Ford Martel, who will bring comments this evening.
Good evening, BUSD family. Good evening, BUSD family. We are so happy to be celebrating the district's Second Annual Disability Awareness and History Month this January. Introduced a year ago by school board resolution, during this month, we highlight, uplift, and celebrate the many contributions of those in our community who identify as disabled. I hope that all in our community are taking advantage of BUSD's teaching guide, our family guides, reading lists, and so much more for this month on disability awareness that can be found on our district's resource webpage. In celebration and recognition of Disability Awareness Month, on January 27, I invite you all to a student-led virtual roundtable featuring Berkeley High School students, staff, and experts in the disability field as they discuss their unique experiences being neurodiverse and physically disabled. The event, again, will be a virtual event on January 27 from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. The Zoom link for this event can be found on Disability Awareness and History Month resource webpage. I will note that January 27 is a no-school day for our students and our families. Also, it means you don't have school, so you should be rested up and ready to attend and engage this excited inaugural event. We're also hosting some other things next week that we want to make sure that you are aware of. We're having an attendance workshop this Thursday, okay, this week, January 23 from 6:00 to 7:30 at the temporary home of Longfellow Middle School, which is located at 1701 San Pablo Avenue. This is an in-person workshop that will cover the must-knows, the laws, and the policies around how to support students' academic success and all you want to know about attendance to our schools. We will also have a chance to engage you in frequently asked questions. And perhaps for some of you, the best part is there will be free childcare, refreshments, and a raffle. We hope to see you there. We are also in the movie premiere business. As part of BUSD's Meeting of Math Minds M3 Initiative, the district is hosting a free community screening and discussion on the film entitled Counted Out on Thursday, January 30 from 5:30 to 8:30 PM in the Oxford Elementary School Auditorium. Counted Out is a new, hard-hitting documentary that shines a light on math as the foundation of democracy and economic opportunity. That's what's happening next week. I want to take a few more minutes, President Brown, to speak about what is happening this evening on tonight's agenda. I know that many of you might have come out in anticipation or hope to hear our facilities update. The facilities presentation was originally scheduled for tonight, but we had to postpone it due to the unfortunate passing of a family member of Assistant Superintendent Facilities, John Kalis. We do extend our heartfelt condolences to John and his family, and we look forward to his return. And we'll make sure to notify you when that facilities presentation will be coming back to be discussed in front of the board. Also, I want to call attention to the information item on tonight's agenda. That's item 16.5, reaffirming BUSD's commitment to education of all children and making all BUSD campuses a safe zone for students and families threatened by immigration enforcement. This resolution was passed by the Board of Education in 2017. This is not a new thing. This is what we do. We are BUSD. It is agendized tonight as an opportunity for this board to remind you of our commitment to ensure that every student, regardless of immigration status, is welcome and safe in our Berkeley public schools. Last night, the city of Berkeley, the first city in the nation to declare itself a city of refuge in 1971, voted to reaffirm Berkeley as a sanctuary city. It is essential that we work in close partnership, not only with our police department, nonprofits, CBOs, Alameda County, City of Berkeley, and all of you, to make sure that our schools truly are safe for all of our students and their families. Tonight's agenda speaks specifically to protecting our undocumented students and families or those who are threatened by immigration enforcement. But we all know that there are others in our community that feel threatened, unsettled, and unsafe at this time. The district is committed to our families threatened by immigration enforcement as well as our transgender and gender expansive students and all students and families that are feeling targeted, threatened, and dehumanized. We're committed to all of our students and families, period. Since November, the district has been preparing, sending communications, and updating our district websites with resources and things for your information. So please, again, go to our website. There's a host of information and resources for all of our students and our families. We've worked closely with our Board of Education to make sure that our policies reflect our values and that our staff are versed on not just those policies, but also the procedures to operationalize them. Tonight, I would also like to reiterate that Berkeley Unified School District strongly believes that free public education is a free, basic, human right. It's not a privilege. It's a right for all of our students and not that a privilege is accessible just to some. We welcome everyone in BUSD schools. We take pride in our diversity and our commitment to provide every student with schools and classrooms that are safe and humanizing. We reject all forms of hate, bullying, and discrimination based on race, ethnicity, religion, gender, gender identity and expression, immigration status, disability, and sexual orientation. We will face what comes together as a community that uplifts and honors all of its members. I've been doing a whole bunch of things to fortify my spirit and to remind me of the work that we do, that we've been doing, and that to stay steadfast and focused on the work that is ahead. One of those things that I do is to read. I want to share with you a recent poem that really resonated with my spirit and inspired me as we continue on in the month of January and the months to come and the years to come. And I hope we can all feel inspired by these words. They are taken from Amanda Gordon's children's book entitled Something Someday. You make a promise to each other. You say, "This is a problem, but it's our problem together. So we fix it together. This problem is big, but together, we are bigger." The takeaway? Together, BUSD, we are bigger. That's the end of my comments, Madam President.
Thank you so much, Superintendent, for your comments this evening and for the beacon of light and hope in such a scary and dark time. At this time, we will move on to public comments. Ms. Chavez has already given her spill and alerted the community, and I have as well, on how we will receive public comments this evening. I am so happy whenever I see a bulk of comments, especially nearly 30 comments, on one specific topic. It is really important to hear from our community members about the issues that are both challenging our communities and issues where we, as a board, can intervene and support. And so at this time, I will call up the representatives who will speak tonight on the Berkeley High tennis courts, but I will call you up in two different groups. So the first group will have five minutes, and the second group will have five minutes. The first group we will hear from is our students. We always prioritize our student voices. And so our students, all of, I believe, the 19 of you all who provided cards this evening can come up together, and you have already organized yourself. And we will put five minutes for speaking time on the clock. Immediately following our student public comments, we will then receive our public comments on the tennis courts, receiving those from our adult speakers. And then after that, we will continue with our next group of public comments, and I will announce those when we get to that time, okay? So at this time, we will receive our group of student comments. And Ms. Chavez has already put five minutes for speaking time for you all, and the board will receive you whenever you're ready.
Can I start? Hi. Hello, my name is Max, and I'm a senior at BHS. And this will be my fourth year on the BHS tennis team. Playing on the team has not only allowed me to improve my tennis skills, but has also given me the opportunity to learn and connect with some of the brightest coaches and teammates that East Bay has to offer. Berkeley High has two tennis teams, which together account for over 50 kids year over year and has been without courts since 2001, when they were paved over for a teacher parking lot. At that time, we were told it was a temporary problem, which would be fixed promptly. It's now been 24 years. As a result, we are the only high school team in the East Bay that does not have home courts. For the last few years, we've been renting courts from Cal, but those courts are being torn down this year, so they will no longer be an option. We don't know where or whether we'll have a place to play next season. Athletic Director Ross Parker has been working very hard to solve this immediate problem. And our amazing coaches have been so dedicated to the tennis program, working patiently with over 20 years of school boards and facilities teams to find a solution. But it is time to fulfill your promise and get serious about rebuilding the Berkeley High tennis courts. It is time to act now to fix the problem and build a permanent solution so our team doesn't have this kind of instability and uncertainty each year. We thank you for your attention on this issue.
Hello, my name is Ezra Barbinel. I'm a junior at BHS, and I've played on the Berkeley High tennis team for three years. The first day of my freshman year tryouts, I went to the courts knowing very few people with little to no tennis skills. Instantly, the players and coaches welcomed me into the community, allowing me to quickly grow my tennis skills and bond with my teammates. I want future generations of Berkeley kids to be able to experience this. Not only is our team full of amazing tennis players, but also warm, inclusive, compassionate people. It's a place where we all come to challenge ourselves, grow, get better at tennis, and be with one another. Every single day of our season, I look forward to practice. Not only do I look forward to practice, but I need practice. And this team needs a home. We can't continue sustainably or at all if we don't have courts. We deserve a place to practice, just as all the other sports at Berkeley High have. This past season, the girls' tennis team made the North Coast Sectional Tournament for the first time since 2019. We also play second in our league. That being said, all of our progression is threatened if we don't have a place to play. In 2020, Berkeley voters approved Measure G, a school facilities bond measure, with part of that money intended to rebuild our tennis courts. This is important because in this year of budget cuts to the district's general fund, all work on these tennis courts would come from a separately voted tax bond, which by law can only be used for facilities construction. The current district budget challenges do not affect the district's capacity to build these courts. We need courts to continue this amazing community and team for generations to come. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Yannir, and I'm a senior at Berkeley High School. This will be my fourth year on the BHS tennis team. The team has been a super important part of my high school experience. Not only has it been a way for me to play tennis in a supportive setting, but also a way to become part of a whole community. The environment in our practice and matches is always amazing due to our team's close-knit community, and some of my closest friends are on the team. I've been lucky enough to have been on the team in the four years where we've been on Cal courts. Next year, those courts go under construction, leaving future Berkeley High tennis teams without courts. I'm speaking so that future students and tennis team members can have the same opportunities I did, to be able to play a sport on a team that fosters development, fun, and community with stable courts to play at. According to the district's webpage, when voters approved Measure G in 2020, part of the funds were intended to construct a parking structure on the existing parking lot located on Millvia Street. Parking structure, the parking structure was to be multi-level and accommodate staff parking and include tennis courts on the roof to support the BUSD tennis program, physical education, and community use when not in use by BUSD. Unfortunately, this proposal was canceled last year, leaving the program without courts. There is now a revised proposal to build five tennis courts in a robotics building at the current softball site, with softball moving to Mullering Field where baseball is played. Unfortunately, this proposal to include our tennis courts is now coming under further delay. This 24-year problem needs to be addressed and resolved this calendar year. It's time the board took this seriously and gave us the home that was removed 24 years ago. We need a place to play next season, and we need a permanent home for Berkeley tennis so we're not worried about losing our courts every single year. Thank you for supporting us as Berkeley High student athletes.
You have about 21 seconds left. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? No? Oh, okay. Well, thank you all so much for your words and for your advocacy, and thank you for being strong leaders of your generation. So thank you for coming this evening. You all may take your seat. At this time, we will receive our next group of speakers, who are our adult speakers, who will be speaking on the topic of Berkeley High tennis courts. Please remember that you all also have five minutes, and so please govern yourselves accordingly. And then following that, we will receive our public comments for those who will speak tonight in regards to agenda item 16.5. I do only have three speaker cards for that item, but we'll still provide the five minutes and allow you to govern yourselves accordingly, since you will be speaking as a group, okay? We will receive you at this time. Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, esteemed board. My name is Coach Tiffany Liu. I'm also a Berkeley High counselor, Ms. Tiffany. I've been coaching the girls' team for the past four years. And as a team, we've been constantly displaced three times in the last four years. In my first season, the girls had to take a 20-minute bus ride or a 30-minute walk to San Pablo Park, 1.1 miles away from Berkeley High School. And once they arrived, they were regularly stared down by oftentimes grown men from the local tennis community who were angry that all the courts were taken away because they were reserved to us. I was occasionally the only female, the only adult female, and the only one who was responsible for over 20-plus young girls. And this was both unsafe and unacceptable for the young players and myself. At the King Courts, we had to squeeze over 20 players onto three courts on a daily basis, often having to play until the sun set due to no lights, all of which is neither safe nor productive. Five girls serving on a baseline is not safe. Five to 10 girls standing by the fence waiting their turn because there's no available court is not productive. And constantly having to throw away my meticulously planned practice plans or worse, having to ask coaches from opposing teams for forgiveness because we're missing players due to late buses or transportation issues is an absolute nightmare. For these reasons, Berkeley High has not had a proper competitive girls' program because experienced players would often not join our team due to its reputation as a messy, unproductive, and uncompetitive program. It's not equitable, and it honestly leads to coach burnout. Our team has been very patient, and I am the only girls' coach left. I've outlasted four other coaches, and I frankly wanted to leave every year just because of the stress. This year was the first semblance of a competitive, functional team. Even as Ezra shared, we made it to the NCS for the first time since 2019. And, thank you. We want to be, once again, be homeless when Cal turns down, turns down the courts. Let's please work together to find a solution. We have no intention to bump heads with any other sports program, but it's about time that our tennis program, who was robbed of our courts 21 years ago, becomes a priority. Thank you.
Good evening and Happy New Year. My name is Jeff Yu. I'm the boys' tennis coach, and I'm going into my 11th year. I was born and raised in Berkeley, had my first tennis lesson on those old Berkeley High tennis courts, so my roots run deep. My late father is in the Hall of Fame at Berkeley High. I played number one at Berkeley High. My brother played number one. So as you could see, we have great student athletes, well-spoken, the best students. They're coachable, great people, so I'm very proud to be the coach. But I've been battling through this for at least 15 years. I've spoken to Mayor Bates, Mayor Aragüe, Superintendent Evans Stevens, Facility Director Tim White, Ms. John Kalis, School Board Presidents Josh Daniels, Ty Albert, Laura Babbitt. I could go on all day, but it's been 24 years. Our students deserve the best. For me, Berkeley, I was born in Berkeley. Berkeley is a world-class city, so we need tennis courts. We're the only high, public high school in the East Bay that doesn't have, does not have tennis courts. A comparable high school in enrollment is James Logan High School, and that's in Union City. They have 11 tennis courts, and we don't have any. So for me, I probably take it a little personal because I got my start on those old Berkeley High tennis courts. So please, 24 years is long enough. And also, in terms of using money, you know, the bond measure and taxpayers, and if you want the community to keep supporting these bond measures, you've got to come through. You've got to come through for everybody. It's very important. So delaying it, I think 24 years is long enough. So thank you so much for having us this evening.
Thank you so much for your comments this evening. At this time, I will call up our next group of speakers who will speak on item 16.5, which is the resolution reaffirming BUSD's commitment to the education of all children and making all BUSD campuses a safe zone for students and families threatened by immigration enforcement. We will receive you at this time. And I'd like to just take this time of personal privilege to welcome back into our board chambers our beloved former school board president, Ms. Beatrice Lava Cutler. Whenever you are ready, you may begin.
Thank you. Thank you, Honorable Superintendent, School Board President Brown, and Board of Directors. As a former school board member and longtime early-to-school-age executive director of bilingual care here in Berkeley, I'm committed to our city and our school district, which continues supporting Berkeley Unified as a sanctuary zone for our students and families. It's beyond critical. We must stand side by side unanimously with the city and the over 231 community members who have signed on asking for you to vote 100% as the school board on the resolution at your February 5 school board meeting. Your positive vote for this resolution communicates your position and support of our families and students who make up the fabric of our community. We have parents who are nannies to children in Berkeley, work in Berkeley restaurants and clean houses, and are the gardeners and the workforce of our city, our state, and our county. We care for the academic success of all of our students. If they are worried about their safety and that of their families and parents, they will not succeed. And if they don't succeed, we have failed them and their families. Now that the 47th POTUS has stipulated in its orders that there's no sensitive areas like schools and churches as protected places for our students and their families. It is imperative that we, as a city and a school district, push back together and united against racist and unproductive executive actions that only hurt families and traumatize children, their parents, and our community. We respectfully request that the school board vote 100% to support this resolution, as previous boards have endorsed, and to join the city and county in protecting our students and our families as sanctuary school district, including before and after school and summer programming. Our schools are sanctuary and a safety zone for our students and families, and we ask the district and the school board to commit to working closely with the city by participating in the mayor's sanctuary task force. Do we have your support?
Good evening, Superintendent and Berkeley School Board. My name is Gladys Ocampo Stowe, and I'm here on behalf of Latinos Unidos of Berkeley. We are here to respectfully ask the Berkeley Unified School District to adopt a resolution reaffirming the Board of Education's commitment to making BUSD campuses a safe zone for students and families. We'd like to thank the superintendent for her comments and for the support of the resolution. We believe this resolution would be strengthened by outlining your collaboration with the city of Berkeley, reaffirming our city as a sanctuary city and refuge for all, including our immigrant families. We ask the district to work with the city attorney to protect sensitive sites such as our schools from civil litigation in the event of ICE raids. Additionally, we urge you to align with the city's sanctuary city protocols and pass an amended reaffirmation with a stronger protections, as many other California districts have done so. Thank you. Together, we can make Berkeley a place where all families feel safe and supported. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Good evening, school board directors, district administrators, and everyone present or watching this evening. My name is Carol Perez, and I am a Berkeley resident, a parent of two children who went through Berkeley schools, and an employee of BUSD. Today, I can say I feel uplifted because despite or in spite of the hateful threats and hostility come from the selected U.S. president and some in Congress, our Berkeley mayor and city council has voted to strengthen its commitment to Berkeley as a sanctuary city. Also today, I, along with others, several other BUSD staff, received an important and thorough training about how we will protect our schools' communities from those threats. And in addition, I have learned that two of our school board directors are writing a resolution that reflects the city's sanctuary resolution to further protect students at our schools. I encourage the school board to pass this resolution so that our immigrant community will know without a doubt that BUSD stands in solidarity with them. Thank you.
Just one last comment. You know, the tennis courts have been there, and I definitely support. I was there, part of the 2020, making sure that that passed, and so it's time. So let's, let's get down to business and really figure out a solution for our students and our coaches. Thank you.
Thank you all so much for your comments and for your advocacy. At this time, we will move on to our online comments. We have four attendees who will speak to the Board of Education this evening. We will begin with our first comment from Matthew Hurst, followed by our comment from Lindsay Nofelt. We will give each speaker two minutes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you just fine. Welcome.
Great. Thank you so much. This is the first time I'm commenting online. I'll try and make this brief. My name is Matthew Hirsch. I'm a Longfellow parent with a sixth grader and also have a third grader elementary school who will join Longfellow in 2027. I was one of about 40-some-odd BUSD parents and Longfellow neighbors who participated in a parent meeting last night to discuss impacts of the workforce housing project due to start soon at Longfellow's temporary site at the Berkeley Adult School. Thanks to Board Member Shinoski for joining that meeting. All in all, I've had more opportunity to engage with other parents and neighbors about this project than with the school district, which is responsible for providing Longfellow students the quality education and safe and healthy learning environment that all kids deserve. Parents are getting organized. I suspect you'll hear plenty more from us. One request I'd like to make tonight is for the district to designate an ombud or an ombuds person specifically tasked with listening to concerns about BUSD facilities issues, including impacts on construction at the Berkeley Adult School Longfellow site. The ombud should be accessible onsite at the Berkeley Adult School Longfellow campus, at least on a weekly basis. Inevitably, parents and neighbors will have concerns as construction proceeds. We deserve access to information and prompt solutions when issues do arise.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next, we will go to Lindsay Nofelt, followed by Timothy Burrows.
Sorry, I'm just pulling at my stuff. Maybe Timothy Burrows is more prepared than I am to figure out how to do this on my phone. Move to somebody else who's more prepared.
Okay, that's no problem, Lindsay. We will come back to you. At this time-
Thank you. I'm so sorry.
Don't worry. At this time, we'll receive comments from Timothy Burrows. And then hopefully by that time, Lindsay, you will be ready to go.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Timothy Burrows, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I wanted to follow up on Matt's comments. I was also at that meeting yesterday, 40-ish parents in person and some online. And I would say that most, if not all, of the parents at the meeting are, you know, feel proud to live in a community that's advancing a workforce housing project like the one BUSD is leading and has hired some affordable housing developers to develop and build. It's difficult to pull a project like that together, and it's an important project that needs to move forward. The concerns in the room were not necessarily with the project itself. The concerns were with the insufficient communication with the Longfellow community about the project. Many families remain unaware that there's even going to be a massive construction project on the site. Those that are aware of the project are not confident that plans are in place to maximize student safety and health during the construction. And it's also clear that the facility itself right now, especially the outdoor space that the students have access to, is at a disadvantage compared to the other middle schools in our community. And there's a lot of concern that the project is going to exacerbate that inequity, especially if special care and planning is not given to ensuring strategic investment in the site and also lots of communication. There was one webinar, a one-directional webinar, a week before Christmas that was held to provide information about the project. That is not proactive, transparent communication. Again, many parents didn't know about the webinar or have not listened to the webinar. I understand that the superintendent plans to come to Longfellow soon in February to a PTA meeting and a school site meeting. I think that's an important step. But I also want to note that that's just weeks before the project is set to break ground and we're six months into the school year. And I think it would have been nice for there to be more proactive, transparent communication long before, weeks before the project is about to break ground. So there was a good deal of frustration at that meeting. You should know, I would advocate for Matt suggesting that there be more ongoing communication and also clear mitigations for some of the risks associated with the project. And I appreciate the time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your comments. As a reminder, anyone online, it is very difficult to hear when the buzzer goes off. And so I don't want to interrupt anyone, but if you could pay attention to your clock, you will get about two minutes of speaking time. And then whenever you hear me say thank you, I'm going to ask that you just do, just as Timothy did, which is conclude your sentence, and we will invite the next speaker to speak. Thank you so much, Timothy, for your comments. Lindsay, are you ready at this time?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
And you, I can't see the buzzer, so you should just interrupt.
Okay. I'm glad we have that relationship. I will interrupt you.
My name is Lindsay Nofelt and I'm speaking as a member of Reading for Berkeley on discussion item 15.1, the Court Monitor Report for the Literacy Action Plan. George Ellis highlights the excellent work this year, and that is wonderful. I agree with all the points that he made. However, he does not put enough emphasis on the importance of alignment at all school sites, which would result in improving literacy instruction and outcomes for all students. We families bear the burden and the personal cost of weakness in reading instruction and intervention. It's born in the reduction of our children's learning potential and it's wasting time that they don't have. We feel the urgency. This is an emergency that must be met with a change in habits. The result of complacency is that some classrooms still level kids using the A through Z running records, which has been shown to be inaccurate and time-consuming. In some classrooms, nothing is done to address alarming assessment results. In some classrooms, teachers have a "not my job" mentality and expect interventionists to come in and solve learning struggle. In some school sites, principals do not know what teaching looks like in their classrooms. In some school sites, literacy coaches offer reading recovery on the down-low after school. In some school sites, literacy coaches spend all their time helping students directly instead of multiplying their effect by helping teachers do better. And in some school sites, this pilot year is not a bridge year. It's just another year of Lucy Kaufman's warts and all. Our children pay the price of these missed learning opportunities and unequal outcomes across school sites. The pain is real. I urge you to continue the work with an extended year of court monitoring so that all actions, as defined in the plan, can be fully implemented and we can be certain that BUSD is doing the best for our children. Thank you.
Perfect timing. Thank you. We will receive our final online comment this evening from Decoding Dyslexia. You also have two minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you just fine. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Megan Potente and I'm commenting on the Literacy Improvement Plan Agenda item. I am co-state director of Decoding Dyslexia California. We are a grassroots group made up of parents and professionals dedicated to improving literacy outcomes for students with dyslexia and all struggling readers. And we have paid very close attention to the happenings in Berkeley Unified since 2021, when the federal class action dyslexia lawsuit claiming that the district failed to identify students with reading difficulties and provide the necessary support was settled. And while the district is in its last year of monitoring, as defined in the settlement, the reality is there is much more work to be done. An extension of the monitoring by an impartial outside expert is warranted. Mr. Ellis's work has been critical thus far and needs to continue. The district delayed starting the implementation of the literacy settlement. The district took two years to train teachers on the why, which is very important. But this means that teachers have not been trained in how to apply their learning to a new curriculum. Continued professional development for teachers and administrators is needed. And an extension of the monitoring is urgent in ensuring sustainable cultural shifts and system change. Please continue to focus on literacy for all in BUSD. Thank you.
Thank you as well. We will now continue on with our committee comments this evening. I believe that we have a number of committee comments that we will receive at this time. And so if you are going to make a committee comment, please join us at the podium. As a reminder, our committee commentators will have five minutes to speak for each committee that they are representing. And we will begin with our committee comments from our audit committee.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board and Superintendent Martel, Pauline and colleagues. I'm Laurie Snowden, a member of the Audit Committee. Our other members are Isaiah Roder, Dan Lindheim, and our board members, Kadisha and our newest member, Jennifer Shinoski. I'm here to give you an overview of the audit of our 2023-2024 financial statements. And our independent auditor, Charles Raebly, will give you the full report later on and answer all of your questions. The main takeaway is that for our federal programs, we received an unmodified opinion. That means there are no audit findings, no questioned costs or control issues. No modifications to the financial statements were required. So an unmodified opinion is the best you can do. For the state programs, we did have three findings, although none of them rose to a material level, but they all rose to a level where they had to be reported. The first was in attendance accounting. At two school sites, one student per site was improperly claimed for apportionment with a cumulative overstatement of two days of attendance with a total effect of .02 or 2/100 of an ADA. The error was below the .5 ADA, so there's no fiscal impact, but it does have to appear in the audit. The cause was clerical error. The remedy is additional training for staff, which management will provide. The second finding was in the independent study program. It has some fiscal impact, but still minor. For two of the 25 pupils selected in the traditional long-term study, there was no teacher's signature on their agreement, but ADA was claimed for them. For one of five pupils selected in short term, the agreement lacked other information required by the aid code, but ADA was also claimed. The total impact was an overstatement of 1.93 ADA with an impact of about $25,000. The district will revise and resubmit attendance reports to reflect this. In addition, management will implement overall controls to ensure independent study agreements are in compliance. The third finding was in the ACES Program, After-School Education and Safety. At both sites selected, discrepancies in pupil counts were found between underlying documentation, which consists of the students signing in, and the total report. The impact was an under-report of 116 days. You may remember there was a similar finding in last year's after-school, although it was smaller. It was 10 days in after-school, one day in before-school. The fiscal impact was pronounced to be undeterminable, so there's no restatement required. The cause again was clerical error, possibly compounded by staff turnover and the inherently more casual nature of the after-care. The overall takeaway is that we had a very clean audit. These last findings were minor ones of low to no fiscal impact. The district is fortunate to have conscientious and talented people in fiscal services headed by Pauline, who has been keeping us solvent for years. And the auditor particularly called out Emily for her hard work in moving the audit forward. And you'll notice that it was delivered on time this year. So we would also like to thank Vivian, who seamlessly supports our work. And we'd like to thank the board for your continuing support and attention, especially those of you who are currently serving or will serve or have served. Thank you.
Thank you as well for your comments. Just to point out to the community and to the Board of Education, we will hear a little bit more about that audit report when we reach Item 13.1 on this evening's agenda. But thank you for that very thorough and important update. It is always great news, great to hear good news about our audit. And so thank you for that tonight. We will receive our next committee comment. Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent and School Board Members. I'm Rita Smith. This is Diana Soy, two members of Berkeley PTA Council Executive Leadership Team. We're here to highlight some of the issues we, as a collective PTA, have been discussing and working on. The BPPTA Council hosted interim director Youssef Aletta, who spoke at our September meeting. We felt optimistic about the commitment to find practical and useful solutions for our Berkeley working parents, including informing parents of registration in the spring for a fall enrollment, which will alleviate the stress for parents of not knowing until two weeks before school starts, which is what's been the pattern. Allowing parents to plan better for alternatives as needed. Another practical after-school solution involved working with the city of Berkeley to expand their after-school programming, to increase adding an additional 100 students. While 100 students is less than 10 students per elementary school, it is a step in the right direction, expanding access to after-school care for families in need. There's several issues of transparency, outreach and communication that have come up as a concern for the relationship between many families with BUSD. We are grateful for transportation options provided by the district, which supports schools with diverse populations and helps with after-school sports. Communication and outreach regarding bus transportation needs improvement. Do parents know the policy for who qualifies for bus transportation? How are families' experiences with registration? Is there sufficient information or communication? Feedback on our end is that new and returning families experience inconsistent outreach and information is limited. We're told to ask the principal. Principals have no information. We're told to email transportation. Emails are sometimes answered. We're told to call after not receiving response via email. For example, one parent with two students had no idea about the Longfellow bus and was paying out of pocket for bus fare for her child. We've heard parents just give up. The website has a fax page, which, these are helpful, but many families find not sufficient. We would suggest a survey as a means of better understanding family transportation needs and then on an ongoing basis to have effective outreach and communication and support for families to get information sooner. We ramp up support at the end of the school year and again during the month of early August and September for communication on PTA, adding information to weekly newsletters in addition to current channels would be a helpful way to get this information out. Additionally, can we publish bus schedules? Can we provide outreach to our most vulnerable families? Similarly, with the looming list of capital projects scheduled for many, if not all, our schools, communication and transportation transparency is vital. We understand that we are stakeholders, but we are not decision-makers in the process of these projects. Many parents are concerned with how BUSD has administered the facility's upgrades to ensure the safety of our students. The most recent enormous projects and concerns have been the renovation of Celia Mendez and Longfellow. Though necessary for project completion, it's not ideal and maybe not even safe to have construction completed near children. Outreach, continued communications, status updates and town hall meetings are a must to facilitate transparency and build trust. Parents want to know what the changes are and how it will impact their children. Parents want to know what the changes are and how it will impact their children. What is the safety plan? What is the protocol to voice concern? These plans should be provided to families before the project starts. Town halls and continued status updates be standard and not a reaction to a concerned community. Why do we ask for outreach to build trust? While there's been significant change in personnel over the last several years, many decisions made in the pandemic lacked transparency, leading to waning trust in the system. The BPTA offers solutions to improve communication between the district and families. The Superintendent Monthly A-plus newsletters and videos are helpful. Keep websites updated with relevant information. Use a multi-pronged approach. School principals provide weekly newsletters. Our PTAs have strong e-trees. Use the PTA as a partner to disseminate information. Rebuild the trust based on transparency and being true to your word. Anxiety is likely to build as parents anticipate a national political narrative that is going to try to split our community apart. We need to anticipate this and be proactive with leadership from the superintendent messages to principal letters and to PTAs. Lack of response is a response. We advise that we stand together and help lead. Our PTAs across schools are still fundraising to plug holes that school budgets cannot meet, and with continued budget cuts to the general fund, we expect there to be more holes. I will stop there.
Thank you. Thank you, PTA, for your comments this evening. Thank you. We will move to union comments. Are there any union comments? Hearing then, we will now move to board member comments. Is there a board member who would like to start us off? Director Vasudev.
Thank you, President Brown. Good evening, everyone. Just want to thank everyone who came out for public comment tonight. Sad that our students left because I had a message for them, but hopefully they'll watch the recording later. Are you from the tennis? Thank you. Thank you for staying. I'm especially grateful to have heard from all of our students on the tennis team. And I share their frustration waiting for the new courts. To say that this is an inconvenience would be an understatement. You have my commitment to push for your new courts. And I know that Coach Julie and I met recently, and I'll continue to follow this issue. I also am serving on the Facilities Subcommittee, so we'll be happy to follow up there as well. I also want to thank our Longfellow families who spoke on the phone, spoke on Zoom, for also attending our meeting and expressing their concern about the construction on campus. I know that this has been a sore point for a lot of our families, and we'll also be following up with our Facilities Director about that. Finally, I want to thank our immigration advocates who are here tonight speaking in favor of our undocumented students and their families. I also want to thank the committees for your comments tonight and your requests for improved transportation. I have been meeting one-on-one with families who share those concerns and with the superintendent to see how we can streamline and improve our transportation on the district side. And at the same time, we, and the collective we, the district, and in general, all school districts in Alameda County, need to do a better job working with AC Transit to make sure that our students that are eligible for affordability passes, the Student Transit Pass Program, are signed up for those programs, particularly at the middle school and high school level. So I want to thank the PTAs for your comments as well. Thank you. And I think you sent those in writing as well to the board, so much appreciated. Yesterday, I had the pleasure of speaking at a community rally outside of the Berkeley City Council meeting, right outside these doors, in support of historically significant vote from our city on the resolution reaffirming Berkeley as a sanctuary city. I want to publicly thank Mayor Ishii, Councilmembers Blackabye and Luna Parra, and the entire council for their support of our undocumented community. My concern for undocumented students is that with mass deportations and raids in communities, there will be irreparable trauma inflicted on innocent generations of children. We've already seen these impacts this year in counties such as Kern County and Tulare County. Were due to the recent immigration raids, families are terrified to send their children to school, and there has been a decrease in school attendance. I actually called a supervisor in Tulare County and spoke to them this weekend about the impact that these raids have had on the students in his county. It's pretty heartbreaking. This past weekend, Director Corn and I had a similar interaction where we met with immigrant rights advocates in Berkeley. And that same fear and anxiety that's being felt right now by undocumented families in the Central Valley is being felt by undocumented families within our Berkeley community. Immigrant families need to feel protected by both their school district and their city. Our children participate both in school programs and city programs, and these programs need to talk to each other about how they will ensure the safety of undocumented students and the safety of their loved ones. The board has received a petition from over 200 community members asking us to better coordinate with the city to keep our undocumented students safe. Director Corn and I have been in contact with city leaders since December and are working in collaboration with our city leaders to introduce our own resolution for BUSD, reaffirming the district's commitment to making BUSD campuses a safe zone for undocumented students and families, and will strengthen this resolution by outlining our collaboration with the City of Berkeley as a reaffirmed city of refuge and sanctuary. Many other districts, including Oakland Unified, LA Unified, San Jose Unified, Monterey Peninsula Unified, and many others are calling on additional protections for their students in light of the hateful anti-immigrant rhetoric coming from the federal government. On the February 5th agenda, you will see a resolution strengthening our district's work with the City of Berkeley to protect our undocumented students and their families. And I want to thank my new colleague, Director Jen Corn, for her allyship and leadership co-drafting this resolution with me. Next Monday, Director Corn and I will be meeting with city staff, Mayor Ishii, and Councilmembers Blackabye and Luna Parra to discuss how we will coordinate more closely to protect our undocumented students and incorporate any of these high-level coordination agreements from that meeting, the meeting on the 27th, into the language of the resolution that Director Corn and I will bring forward at the February meeting. I want to remind the public that BUSD rejects any legislation or action that dehumanizes, marginalizes, or violates the rights of our immigrant students and their families in our community and beyond. Our classrooms will be safe, welcoming, and humanizing spaces for all of our students. Nosotros protegeremos a nuestros estudiantes ahora y siempre. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, Director Vasudev. Director Corn, would you like to go next?
Yes, thank you very much. I want to echo all of Director Vasudev's gratitude to the many folks who showed up to make public comment, both in person and online tonight. Thank you for your participation and your advocacy, and I hope that we can work together to solve the tennis court problem. And yeah, anyway, I will continue. I began my week on Monday morning at the 14th Annual City of Berkeley Martin Luther King Day breakfast with the Superintendent and President Brown. It was a beautiful celebration of our community, and our schools were particularly lifted up as Beth Disleva Cutler, former school board president, was honored with the Lifetime Achievement Award. Winter and several other students in middle school and high school received awards for their leadership and their community service. It was a really lovely way to start this week, and it was the first of many times this week that I have been grateful for and proud of our Berkeley community, where we are leaning into caring for each other, being courageous. We are leaning into mutual aid, committing to protect one another in spite of the chaos and cruelty in Washington. On that note, as many have already noted tonight, tonight we will be voting to reaffirm our protections for our undocumented students and families after our city council last night unanimously reaffirmed that the City of Berkeley is a sanctuary city. After reaffirming our existing protections for undocumented students tonight, at our next meeting, as Director Vasudev said, we'll be bringing back an updated resolution with even stronger protections written into it. As we've been preparing for these votes, we have heard from community members who are understandably afraid for themselves and their children during this time of heightened threats and uncertainty for our immigrant communities. The main thing that I want to say to our community tonight is that we will take care of each other. Our district is committed to doing everything we can to keep all of our children and our families safe. Additionally, I want to say to our transgender students, who are also under attack from the new administration in Washington, that we are here to protect you as well. Our policies are clear. Each school must ensure that all students, including LGBTQ students, are provided a safe and supportive learning environment that is free of harassment, discrimination, intimidation, and bullying. Our policies regarding students' right to be addressed by their chosen name and pronouns remain in place, along with our policies regarding restroom access, participation in sports, and much more. I am thrilled that I will be the board liaison, a board liaison, one of two board liaisons to G-Shack this year, and I look forward to working together on LGBTQ and transgender protections. LGBTQ and transgender student protections. And as the superintendent mentioned, we are also celebrating Disability Awareness and History Month in BUSD this January. I have been very proud to see my former Oxford student Kaleo and Eli and Matthew, who were superstar volunteers when I was the principal at Thousand Oaks, featured in some of our district communications about disability awareness this month. All three of these young men are amazing and inspiring leaders. I am very much looking forward to the Monday Disability Awareness Month student-led panel discussion and to celebrating the many gifts of the disabled and neurodivergent young people in our Berkeley Unified community. I am also excited that I will be working with the newly-formed DCAC, Disability Equity Special Education Advisory Committee this year, and I look forward to strengthening our partnerships between BUSD and the families of our students with disabilities. I'm looking forward to tonight's report regarding our literacy improvement program and to the update from special education, and I'm pleased that tonight we will approve committee assignments, and I'm eager to get to work.
Thank you, Director Corn. Student Board Director Clark.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Before I begin, I want to wish you all a belated Happy New Year and Merry Christmas, and I hope everyone had a joyful and restful holiday season. And for the students, I hope you enjoyed the long weekend and are feeling ready to continue the new semester and all the opportunities it brings. It was really great to see so many familiar faces from Berkeley High at the sports board meeting, and hearing about the challenges our tennis team faces without courts was eye-opening to me, especially regarding the safety concerns it raises. I'm also very encouraged by the support shown tonight for undocumented students' educational safety and sanctuary through the passing of Resolution 16.5. The past few weeks have been a whirlwind of events, projects, and new beginnings. And tonight, I'd like to reflect on some new recent milestones and acknowledge the incredible work happening in our school community. First and foremost, I want to highlight today's Achievement Gap Panel hosted at Berkeley High School in the library, which I had the honor of co-moderating alongside a fellow student, Eva Levinson, and hearing from the inspiring panelists and watching students actively engage by asking thoughtful questions and exploring concrete next steps was very encouraging. And addressing the achievement gap is no small task at all, but this event was a strong first step, and I'm really excited to continue collaborating with all of you on meaningful solutions. I'd also like to take a moment to reflect on the wildfires still affecting Los Angeles. And my heart truly goes out to everyone impacted, especially those here in our community with families and loved ones in the area. As someone with family in LA, I know how deeply this resonates, and I wanted to say that we're all holding them in our thoughts and prayers as they navigate these incredibly challenging times. And finally, as we reflect on the significance of Martin Luther King Junior Day, which we observed this Monday, I wanted to leave us with a reminder of his powerful words, which is, "Life's most persistent and urgent question is, what are you doing for others?" And so as we move forward into this year, I challenge all of us to think about how we can answer that question, whether it's advocating for equity in our schools, supporting those in need, or finding ways to uplift our peers. Our actions have the potential to recreate lasting change. And so thank you for all your time and continued commitment to our community, and I'm looking forward to everything we'll accomplish together in the months ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Cheng.
Thank you so much. Good evening and happy upcoming Lunar New Year, which starts one week from today. While the new year provides an important time for self-reflection over the past year, it is an opening to new opportunities, beginning with cleaning your home. Firstly, I want to support the Superintendent and my colleagues' call and their efforts to continue to provide programs and services equitably to all of our students, regardless of citizenship status, in a public education mission-focused, thus non-disrupted manner, rights that were established in decades-old Supreme Court precedent. Thank you, former Board President Beatriz Levia Cutler, students, staff, and teachers for speaking your hearts and minds in public comment at this important public forum. BHS Tennis Courts Seeking Home Courts, and congratulations to girls tennis. I also appreciate the Got Courts meme. Previously, serving on facilities and currently still on the Civilian Bond Oversight Committee, it's a very complicated, long CBOC. Along with Director Shinosky, there were a lot of conversations about where the courts would go, and I encourage you to continue working with ourselves up here and those members of the CBOC and the facilities to ensure that your courts will be in place, which I support. And also condolences and thoughts and prayers to Mr. Kalis, who is so involved in this important modernization work and for his recent loss. And thank you again to former Board President Beatriz Levia Cutler, Latinos Unidos Unidos de Berkeley, and parents and staff on their support for the Safe Zone Resolution. Again, to provide equitable and non-disrupted delivery of programs and services to all of our students regardless of citizenship status, as established in many decades-old U.S. Supreme Court precedent. In addition, we do hear, of course, the concerns and feedback raised about communications efficacy and concerns of impacts of district construction. I know that these are events that, of course, have to be done, and we have the benefit of measures in Berkeley that were passed to support the building and renovation of our schools and ensure that they have safety and longevity through the future. We are also hearing your concerns and suggestions and feedback for best way to engage with you communications-wise. Please also look out for those many communications portals that were raised by the PTAC Committee that are currently available as well, from the superintendent through principals at schools. Not all parents are able to access them in a timely fashion, but I do believe that a lot of information is submitted through there. That doesn't mean that we don't need to work further to ensure that there is that transparency. Finally, thank you for the committee comments and much appreciation for all the hard work in the Audit Committee as well as the PTA Executive Leadership Team. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Shinosky.
Almost last, but not least. I don't want to belabor or repeat the comments that have already been made by my board colleagues and many of you in the public, but I do want to state my own support, especially for undocumented LGBTQ+ AAPI and other communities that are really feeling a lot of stress and anxiety this week. We're there with you, and you know, as a white woman in America, I stand as your ally, and whatever I can do to be supportive, I'm here with my colleagues. I have a few things to report out on. The first, I want to start on a real highlight. Cragmont's rolling drop-off. So Cragmont is a school, one of our elementary schools up in the hills. Drop-off has been tricky, to say the least. It's something that people have been complaining about for years. The roads are windy. Everybody's in a rush. And there were a lot of complaints at the start of the school year. One parent, Jay Kang, came to me, and we met up in the morning with the superintendent. We looked at it all, and we said, "Let's do rolling drop-off." They said it couldn't be done, but it was done. So the first week of school in January, they rolled out rolling drop-off with the support of Jay, the PTA, and Principal Candy Cannon, and put out the cones, wore their yellow vests, and rolling drop-off so far has been a smashing success. So when they tell you it can't be done, just call me and Jay and Candy, and we'll get it done. Literacy, I just want to, I know we're going to have a discussion later on, but I want to just take this moment to shout out our very own Jill Hogendike, Chris Albeck, Rose James, and all the staff and teachers who have really buckled down and made some huge shifts in a district that many people said would be unwilling to shift. It is huge to try and move that boulder. And so I'm just really proud of the work that BUSD has done, and I am optimistic that it will continue and that this board will ensure that the work continues. I was happy to attend my first Audit Committee meeting yesterday. I was happy to attend my first Audit Committee meeting yesterday, and again, it was great to see the great work that's happening under our very own Pauline Fowensby. And I wanted to just raise to my board colleagues some attention to the concerns that are in the audit report about our aftercare programs. This is the second time that those concerns have been raised, and I'm hoping that perhaps the Policy Committee can really dig into some of the issues with the attendance there so that we can avoid future findings and also potentially solve some other challenges that are associated with our aftercare programs. I, as was mentioned by a public comment, I attended the Longfellow Parent Meeting last night, and I know that people have a lot of anxiety and are feeling like, "Oh, this workforce housing project, you know, is a big blindside on top of the move to Longfellow on San Pablo." The workforce housing project has been in the works for many, many years. It was voted on finally by the Board in 2020, and there are a number of really complicated working pieces to that project, including funding, both state and local, public and private, permitting, policy development, et cetera. It's a partnership between BUSD, who is leasing the land, and the developers who will actually do the project and manage the project. It's one of the first in the state, and it is really allowing our district to provide an option for housing for BUSD staff, many of whom grew up in Berkeley but have been priced out. They'd love to come back, they'd love to stay in the district, but they simply can't afford it. Nobody could have anticipated the significant extent of the work that was going to have to be done at Longfellow, necessitating a larger budget and a longer construction time, but the workforce housing project really can't be shifted because of that or in lieu of that. I want to commend BUSD staff for working really tirelessly to shift priorities, to make the moves necessary, to try and keep things moving as seamlessly as possible. And I know that I can speak for myself, and I believe I can speak for my board colleagues and the staff within BUSD, to say that student safety really is always top of mind. It is number one, and we will do our level best in every way to ensure that everyone is safe and we can construct some really fabulous housing for our deserving staff. I'm almost done. Tennis courts. So a recent search of our yearbooks by our very own Yasmina Vitestkic, did I do it right? I try hard, uncovered the first mention of any girl's sport in a 1903 yearbook, and it was about their interest in tennis. And I quote, "Although as yet they have no court of their own, nevertheless, they have played together." So it's been since 1903 that our girls tennis team has been looking for a home. The Facilities Subcommittee Special Meeting in December, in late December, we assessed all of the projects, all of the bond projects, and tried to reorder things and figure out where our priorities were, considering the extent of Longfellow and other project changes and costs. And we look forward to that coming to the Board in February so that we can give you all an absolute construction and completion date for Berkeley High's very own tennis courts, which we have committed to before and hopefully will commit to again. And finally, I just want to thank Winter and Eva Levinson for the panel that they hosted today. It was really an honor to sit on the panel and be with Berkeley High students alongside our superintendent and former Director Babett, and talk about the achievement gap and what we are trying to do to address it. And I look forward to continuing that conversation with this group so that one day, when Aniki Asai can, the kids all read, we all get to say yes. That's it.
Thank you, Director Shunovsky. You are, thank you. It's always so difficult to go last because everyone has already said what you're going to say, and you sound like a broken record. So, Urka, Urka, here we go. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining our Board meeting. I would especially like to thank those who emailed the Board of Education and those who spoke tonight in regards to the Berkeley High tennis courts and ongoing commitment that we need to actually commit to. The resolution to reaffirm our commitment to the education of all children and making BUSD campuses a safe zone for students and families, those who spoke tonight on the Literacy Action Plan, and the need for ongoing work, those who spoke this evening on the workforce housing project, as well as our committee comments from the Audit Committee and PTA. First and foremost, I'd like to say Happy New Year to everyone. It feels a little awkward to be saying Happy New Year 22 days into the New Year, but because this is our first Board meeting of the calendar year, I will say again, Happy New Year, and I still believe it is appropriate to say. A new year is a time for new beginnings, a time to pause, review, and renew our core values, a time to reaffirm our beliefs, and a time to embark on new commitments for ourselves, our loved ones, and our communities. During what I identify as scary, unsettling, a bit familiar, but in some ways unprecedented times, we are currently standing and living in those. And as we embark on this new year, let us not live in the paralyzing walls of fear, but let us do something to liberate, to support, to cover, and to protect our community members during the most important times. I'd like to thank Director Vasudev and Director Korn, Mayor Ishi, the members of the Berkeley City Council, city staff, BUSD staff, Latinos Unidos de Berkeley, and members of various faith communities, and countless other community members for your work and efforts in reaffirming and solidifying our ongoing commitment to stand strong as a Berkeley community by making our campuses safe zones and supporting our sanctuary city status. It was a pleasure to be in community with so many people last night during the rally that happened just before the City Council meeting. It is just a reminder that we are united together as Berkeley and that being united together is the most important thing that we can do during this time. Tonight, you will see it agendized as an information item. However, I'd like to invite all of you to our meeting on February 5th, where the Board of Education will see this resolution. Come back to us as an item that the Board will actually take action on. So please come out in February. You will see us reaffirm that resolution as well as be introduced to a new resolution. And so thank you again, Director Korn and Director Vasudev, for your work and for your service on that. Monday, the nation paused to identify, memorialize, and celebrate the life and legacy of the late, great Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. I, like many of our community members, were intentional about dedicating our time Monday to focusing on the birthday, the dream, and the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King and not much of anything else. Many of us spent this day participating in community service projects, educating ourselves and others about the work of Dr. Martin Luther King and other giants in the fight towards civil rights. This year, I, along with Superintendent Ford Morthell and Director Korn, did as I do every single year, which is to attend the Berkeley Martin Luther King Jr. Breakfast. This has been one of my favorite events, bringing our city together to celebrate a great man and those in our community who are continuing his dream. But for obvious reasons, this year felt much different, and it felt really necessary as we gathered around to focus our energy and our attention on the positive work that is happening in our community. Work being done by our amazing students in our own district, who we honored, like our very own School Board Directors Winter Clark and School Board Director Armstrong, who are doing amazing work at their respective school sites and doing amazing work here on the dais, if we can pause and give them just a little bit of love. We also spent time recognizing community organizations that are really the pillars of our community and help to support some amazing initiatives that are so necessary and needed during this time, as well as to celebrate and honor our Lifetime Achievement Award Honoree, Mrs. Beatriz Leva Cutler. Please give her a hand as well. Although I woke up Monday morning in fear, nervous, sad, frustrated, scared for what was to come, I actually am so happy that I spent time at the MLK Breakfast because I left Monday's event reflecting on my favorite quote by Dr. Martin Luther King that reigns true during this time now more than ever. And I want to remind everyone that despite what orders are put in place, despite who sits at the seat, despite what scary clips we see on the news, please let us remember that darkness cannot drive out darkness. Only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate. Only love can do that. My favorite quote from Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. I am going to actually skip all of the things that you all have already said, and I would like to finally call your attention to some important items that will be discussed this night by the Board of Education, as well as voted on. While I'm excited to engage in all of our agenda items this evening, I'd like to call your attention to Item 15.1, the Monitoring Report on the Literacy Action Plan. In the past, this has been agendized as a presentation, but due to the advocacy from our community members, as well as collaboration between our superintendent and staff and Board leadership, Vice President Chang and myself, it is agendized tonight as a discussion item so that each of you may see publicly how the Board has the opportunity to engage, ask questions, and provide direction on this specific item. So please continue your advocacy, and we will put that advocacy into action. Thank you very much. We will now move on to Item 12, which is our Consent Calendar. Is there a motion to approve this evening's consent calendar?
So moved.
Moved by Director Vasudev. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Shunovsky. All those in favor, please signify with a sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposers? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. This evening's consent calendar is approved. At this time, finally, we will receive our presentation, which is the independent audit report for the fiscal year ending in June 30th, and we will receive your report at this time.
All right. Good evening. My name is Charles.
I know you have a pretty long report, and so if you'd like, you are more than welcome to take a seat. Those microphones work well, but if you would like to stand, you're free to do so as well.
I'll keep it relatively brief only because I know that Ms. Snowden did speak on some of that, and so I'll keep it fairly concise for your sake. So my name is Charles Ribley. As was mentioned before, I'm a senior manager with Crow LLP, and we conducted your financial and compliance audit for the year ended June 30, 2024. And so, you know, we discussed earlier this evening, as was mentioned by Ms. Snowden, some of the kind of results of that audit. I wanted to just briefly talk about the scope and what that really entails between our objectives and our responsibilities and management's responsibilities a little bit. So ultimately, the financial statements are the main component of the audit. So that's kind of piece number one. Piece number two is your state compliance audit, because you're here in the state of California, you have an obligation to have a separate audit over compliance with many different aspects of state education code. And then your federal compliance audit, which is where we audit your federal grants and entitlements, because you spent more than the $750,000 threshold that the government says would require an external audit for compliance. This year, the federal audit included the special education cluster and the child nutrition cluster, so they sort of rotate depending on how much is being spent on a program, if there's new or different types of program, like that ESER funding that we had for a number of years, so we had to audit that. And so in this particular year, the special education cluster and the child nutrition cluster became sort of elevated, needed to be audited, hadn't been audited for a couple of years and needed to be audited. As was mentioned previously, we give unmodified opinions over the financial statements and over your federal programs, and we had those minor, relatively minor, state compliance findings that we had identified. And I'll say this, you know, there's been, there's an aspect of state compliance that is sort of one or the other. It either is compliant or is not compliant, and the way that it is written in the Audit Guide says that if it is not compliant, whether it is an insignificant amount or a big dollar, we have to say so in the report. And so considering there are 30 approximately, there are approximately 30 different components in the Audit Guide that we have to audit, we have to, we have to do a lot of work with regard to these education code compliance areas, and to have only a few minor items is quite an achievement. So I would, you know, kind of reiterate what was said before. Management being able to get us what we needed, that it was correct, and that it was on time, allowed us to do our job and get the audit report completed and submit it on time as well. So quite an achievement. The responsibilities piece that I mentioned, so even though management retains responsibility for the financial statements themselves, so the auditor is there to give an opinion externally over those financial statements as to whether they're fairly stated in all material respects, so we give, we give not absolute assurance, but reasonable assurance that the financial statements are fairly stated, and that's because we don't look at every single transaction and every single balance in those financial statements. So if you're looking at the audit report and you wanted just a nice, easy takeaway of the results of the audit, I like to direct your attention to page 93 of the PDF document, or if you're looking at the physical page, it's 85. And that's our summary of auditor's results. So if you're ever looking at the audit report and you wanted to sort of have one clean, quick takeaway of how that audit came about, that's the page that you go to, and I think is a nice summary as well. It's required by government auditing standards to include it and is a final sort of result summarizing. So I would say that, again, this is a clean audit this year. We've had some challenges in years past, you know, with regard to compliance areas and whatnot, and I think, you know, it was a significant achievement to be able to get the audit done on time, and, which I didn't mention before, that's due to the state of California based on education code by December 15th of each year following the fiscal year. So we were able to submit that prior to that deadline, and had a nice, relaxing holiday for all of us as a result, so I appreciate that. I welcome any questions that you may have over the results of the audit, over, you know, the process that we go through for the audit, or if you want me to expand on anything.
Thank you so much. The Board will just receive this as a presentation tonight, and so there won't be any questions that you will be able to take from the Board of Education, but if there's anything else that you would leave us with, we'll receive it at this time.
I have nothing else to add, so I appreciate your time very much and appreciate management being able to do what they did to provide us what we did so that we could provide this clean audit for you all this evening, so.
Thank you so much. It has been wonderful to partner with you all. We appreciate the findings of our audit. This is definitely something that we should celebrate as a board. And so again, to Assistant Superintendent Fowensby and to your staff, thank you so much for all of your hard work. Thank you for 17 years of successful work and for hard work and for a phenomenal audit. And so we appreciate you, and we appreciate our auditor.
Thank you very much.
At this time, we will move to Action Item 14.1, which is to approve our Board Designees to our Board Committees. And so I will read out our Board Committee assignments for this year, this calendar year. So for our two-by-two committee, it will be supported by President Brown as well as Director Shunovsky. Our Board Policy Committee will be supported by President Brown and Vice President Chang. Facilities will be supported by Director Vasudev and Director Shunovsky. CBOC will be supported by Director Korn, excuse me, and Director Shunovsky. And FSOMOC will be supported by Vice President Chang and Director Vasudev. The Audit Committee will be supported by President Brown and Director Shunovsky. G-Shack will be supported by Director Chang and Director Korn. The African-American Success Advisory Council will be supported by Director Brown. BSEP and BERA PNO will be supported by Director Vasudev and Director Korn. D-LAC will be supported by Director Chang and Director Korn. PAC will be supported by Director Vasudev and Director Chang. CTAC will be supported by Director Shunovsky. PTA will be supported by President Brown. Our Safety Committee will be supported by Director Chang and Director Shunovsky. And the DESAC Committee will be supported by Director Vasudev and Director Jen Korn. And finally, our S-Back Committee will be done rotation style and so that every single Board Member- and so that every single board member will get the opportunity to participate on. All of our committees are critical and important, but every single board member will get to participate on the SBAC Committee rotation style. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion from the board to approve our committee assignments.
So moved.
Moved by Director Shinaski. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Director Chang. All those in favor, please signify with a sign of I.
Aye.
Opposers? Abstention? The ayes have it. The motion carries and our committees are approved. We will take a five-minute break before we come back for item 15, which will be our discussion items. Thank you. With item 15.1, which will be our monitoring report on our literacy action plan. So Ellis, welcome. We are so happy to see you and receive you at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm excited to be here and thank you for moving the item to discussion. So I'm going to try to make the formal presentation about 12 minutes to leave a good chunk of time for you all to ask questions and dig deeper into some of the actions. Because these reports, as you're noticing now, look very similar. And so hopefully we can have most of the time spared for you all to ask questions of me. So let's jump right in. Looking at progress to date of the different actions. If you'll recall, there are 37 actions that are part of the Literacy Improvement Program. And I've separated those into five different cross-cutting themes. If you look where we are currently, December 2024, you can compare where we've been in the past semesters. And we want to be seeing any of the action items in the dark brown, which has substantial progress, or in the tan, which is adequate progress. And then wherever there is minimal progress in the yellow or progress not evident, which we don't have at this time, that's where I have some recommendations for next steps. So we continue to move forward in the progress. And in this report, I'll talk specifically about those four actions. And also how as we move into the final phase of the Literacy Improvement Program, some of those actions where there is adequate progress, the ante's been upped for this final semester. So those may be sliding backwards a bit since we're expecting a more targeted level of implementation with some of those actions. So the first theme is in accountability. And what you'll notice here as before is adequate progress, substantial progress with the majority of the actions. The one action item that has minimal progress, I'll talk about in a minute. So recommendations here specifically for that action item is to begin providing me with evidence of site-level implementation of priority actions here. So one major theme of the report for this semester is the shift from collecting evidence at a district level to collecting evidence per each individual site. Up till now, the monitoring plan that you've been following has been collecting and tracking progress across the 37 actions from a district perspective. So moving forward, what I'd like to see is collection of data particularly around priority actions at the individual site level. So one of the themes you'll notice is that there is inconsistency in implementation of some of the action items of the Literacy Improvement Program across individual school sites. It's also clear that some school sites have implemented almost all of the action items. And then there's other school sites that are on the other end of the spectrum that have partially implemented some of these actions. So it's difficult for me to quantify where the district is as a whole if I'm not receiving that data at this point in time by site level. So the district's working on figuring out what that might look like. And we'll talk about some specific actions and examples where you could begin to see how it's hard to evaluate where the district is without individual site-level data. So when we move forward into the questioning piece, feel free to ask questions about specific recommendations or actions as I'm moving forward through these. The second piece here is just a technicality here. One of the things the district committed to doing was surveying staff at the beginning and throughout the process on their perceptions about this change initiative. There was a lot of data collected at the beginning. And so we need to compare the data with what teachers, principals and staff members now see as their perceptions of the change initiative moving forward. So a minor technicality of a survey there. So in the area of assessment, you notice there's also adequate and substantial progress when it comes to assessment. It makes sense because this is the area that BUSD tackled first by implementing the DIBELS and STAR assessment systems. The recommendations here have to do with increasing the intensity with which assessment data is set forth to the district from the school sites. So what you have here is a recommendation that came from your literacy consultant, Dr. Gibbons, from the University of Minnesota, that when it comes to tier-two reading interventions, progress monitoring and data collections happen every two to three weeks. And I can expand on that in the questioning section if you'd like. And then when it comes to tier-three more targeted and specific interventions, that that happens every one to two weeks. The evidence the district has shown me is that the sites have been trained and that this is happening at the sites, but I have not received data for each individual site. When I have visited the sites and then I've looked into EduClima for myself, I've seen huge discrepancies. I've seen teachers that, for example, you're reading specialists that are doing two to three-week progress monitoring for all their students. And then I've seen some that have done it for one or two students. So if I have more solid data here that's collected, it'll be easier for me to monitor, but also if principals are seeing the site data, then there's some accountability from the instructional leadership perspective as well. And they can check in with where the progress monitoring is not happening at their sites too. The third area we have is instruction. And instruction, the progress has been all over the place, really, when we think about it. Part, the reason why we have two actions that are in the minimal band is the nature of how these actions were written. So I'm going to go back and break down the two actions that are in the minimal band and show why it's there and how complicated those two actions are. And then the recommendations you'll see here will make a bit more sense after these next three slides. So the first is that there is evidence submitted to me of observations of kindergarten through second grade, tier-one explicit phonics instruction. When it comes to third and fifth grade, also evidence that principals are observing fluency instruction. And then moving on to grades six through eight, a similar recommendation, however, the tool hasn't been developed yet. What you'll see in the next two slides is that the tool has been developed and submitted it as evidence for K2. A separate tool has been submitted for three through five, and the district is still working on a tool for six through eight. So here's how the action looks. I'll give you some time just to read through that action by yourselves and then I'll break down the four subcomponents of the two actions that are in the minimal band. So part of the work I've done with the implementation team at the district is helping deconstruct some of these more complicated actions. So what you have written there, the first piece is actually implementing a professional development program, which the district chose as core. So that's the first piece in there. The second piece was then providing teachers the professional development on how that aligns with their curricular resources. So that first you got to figure out what training you're getting, which is step one. Then you got to provide the training and connect it to your curriculum, which is step two. The third piece in here has to do with coaching. Because in this action, you see it's mentioned coaching. And after coaching, that there's also observations by the site-level admin and some feedback provided. So where we are right here is that the observations and feedback provided to teachers is the piece that has not happened yet. So that's why this particular action 13A and then the complementary action 13B for middle school are still at the minimal band. That's a hugely important piece. The instructional leadership from the site principals, observing teachers in action, providing feedback, and also being able to quantify where your teachers are at. How many teachers are implementing these strategies? How many are not? And for those who aren't, what type of differentiated assistance do we have through coaching, through the district literacy coordinators to help them be able to implement? The district has implemented, created some tools for principals to use. So here's an example of the tool they created to observe kindergarten through second grade. So that's been submitted as evidence. Where principals are at right now is together, they're doing instructional rounds where they're coming in groups of three or four. They're using these tools together by going to one school site and then collectively getting used to the tool. What is not happening and what will happen next, hopefully, is that the tool is then used once principals have confidence at their individual school sites with individual K through second grade teachers and that there is evidence of not only the observation with the tool, but some type of feedback to the teachers as well. For third through fifth grade, the district has created another tool for the focus for those grades, which is fluency instruction. As with K through second grade, the instructional rounds are happening where principals collectively are learning how to use the tool. What has not happened is that principals are not using it consistently with their individual third through fifth grade teachers to provide feedback as well. So that's one of the recommendations you saw before. The sixth through eighth grade tool is still being implemented, but once, sorry, created. Once it's created, then I would expect the same thing, that it be used and that there be evidence that it's being used at each individual sites and that feedback's being given to sixth through eighth grade humanities teachers as well. So a lot of work has been done in the area of instruction, but this particular piece of observing teachers, providing feedback and really looking for fidelity at the sites is what's missing right now. It's not uncommon in the third year of a large change initiative for implementation to be spotty across the board. This is where active instructional leadership is key. And principals really taking the lead at this stage is important. Up till now, the district's taken the lead on the Literacy Improvement Program. And that's the nature of a large-scale initiative. They had to have some direction at the district. Tools needed to be created. Training had to take place. Where we are now is the implementation is in the hands of the principals to really hold teachers accountable, also to get teachers excited and find different ways to have these observations be part of the BUSD culture as opposed to something that happens every other year. When it comes to intervention, this is an area where there's been much progress, particularly in the K through five sites. The recommendations from the last report were to really look at intervention in grades six through eight. The district spent the whole fall doing that. They restructured their reading support and reading implementation courses. They audited their curriculum and they adopted a new curriculum rewards to be used alongside with Orton-Gillingham morphology. So there's been a lot there. This recommendation was one I had from last semester as well. I've been in many of these classrooms and I've seen instruction across the spectrum. And I think the teachers would benefit from watching each other at this level and doing some peer observations and learning from the expertise at each one of the sites and going across the three middle school sites as well. The final piece here in systems of support, there's been adequate progress throughout. The final action, which is still in the minimal band, is the most difficult action of all of them to complete the MTSS Specific Learning Disability Eligibility Plan. The reason why this is going to stay in the minimal band for a while is because it's the culmination of all the other actions. In order for the district to use MTSS as an eligibility criteria for specific learning disability, all the other 36 actions have to be in place. And more has to happen with that as well. So this is one of the most complicated actions. Few districts in California have done this, so BUSD is also a trailblazer in figuring out how to do this. And it's not surprising that this is in the minimal band. It also feels a little strange on my end to see it in the minimal band because I know how hard the special ed department has worked the past year on this action. But given the nature and the complexity of the action, I couldn't move it forward yet until I see a complete or a completed draft at least. It's still in the drafting process. This final recommendation had to do with the instructional leadership I mentioned earlier. Principals have received a lot of training so far in literacy. And I'd like to see a similar training happen with how to manage a change initiative, how to lead a change initiative. As I said before, this is now a site-level implementation program. And some principals are very confident with leading a change management initiative and holding teachers accountable. Others are not as uncomfortable. So leveling the playing field by providing some targeted professional support for them could be really helpful for getting across this final piece here. This final slide just talks about considering all of the pieces of a large implementation model where we should be, and we should be here in this third phase after implementing the 37 actions. Really innovating those actions, making them part of the school culture at each site, and also having some type of fidelity with flexibility based on student populations, teacher populations and the different school demographics as well. All right. I wanted to save time for questions. I went two minutes over what I had planned, so apologies there.
That is quite all right. You were quite quick for us, so thank you so much. Colleagues, I have about eight questions, so I'll just ask three and then we can go ahead and go round robin style. My first question is in regards to the assessment section. And so, you know, the district provides, or doesn't the district provide a cadence of assessment? So either that two to three weeks or the one to two weeks. So if so, the data for each individual site should be the same or the assessment time, the times when assessments are happening should be the same for each individual site. And so I'd like to know more, and maybe this is a question that Associate Superintendent Hogan, I could help answer, but is there an assessment calendar provided? And how do, how is that calendar being monitored?
Why don't I start? You jump in? So there is an assessment calendar that's been submitted as evidence. It's very clear to teachers when their assessment windows are. They have received training and there is accountability at the district level, looking at who's administered the assessments and who hasn't. That's when, in reference to tier-one assessments, those are assessments for all students. So that happens three times a year, so about every 10 to 12 weeks. The recommendations I made here had to do with students who are receiving additional services based on those benchmark assessments that happen three times a year. So using those assessments, if a student is identified in need of additional reading support, then they begin to receive tier-two services. And so the progress monitoring goes from three times a year to every two to three weeks. So we have enough data to be able to really monitor their progress throughout the year. If they're still not making progress, they receive tier-three instruction and that's where the assessments happen on a weekly or bi-weekly basis. What am I missing?
Seems as though you covered it. Thank you. I want to move on to the instruction section. Some of the feedback that I've been receiving, I'm sure my board colleagues as well, is concerns around the progress, especially for tier-one for middle school. So there, if we could go back to that slide, Liz, or Mr. Ellis, if you're able to. So in terms of grades six through eight, the feedback that we're receiving is just that progress has been kind of slow on that. And so I was wondering if you could, could speak to that or if you'd like to speak to that as well.
Same thing. I'll start and then you jump in. Yeah, that is true. It's also why about a year ago, I separated some of the actions, for example, nine into nine A and nine B to show the progress that was happening at the elementary level, which is nine A versus the progress at the middle school, which was lagging behind. The district chose to start with elementary and build on all the lessons learned from any of the actions at the elementary before tackling the similar middle school actions. So that's why the middle school actions tend to lag a little bit behind. What else?
Well, I will say that one of the other, one of the other things that this board took action on in year one of the settlement was to approve a position of Director of Curriculum and Instruction. So part of year one was around our resource capacity to support this work in, across all 14 of our schools. So we had to identify where we needed to put that priority focus, which felt that we needed to put our resources toward that early intervention and closing the gap and making sure that our youngest students became readers quickly. We did then focus on the intervention components based on some of the revisions, not revisions, the separations that were on that literacy action tracker. So middle school is going to lag, but we have, we're putting a lot of resources in this year to complete the pilot for the elementary grades. And then once we move through that and identify our ongoing resources to support a new curriculum adoption in the elementary group, we will turn our attention to middle school.
Okay, thank you. I think for me, that helps me understand why middle school is moving slow. And so I think my better question is, outside of curriculum adoption, how do we help it move faster?
Yep. So what I, so I guess it's important to note that we have been laying the groundwork for our middle school grades. Our middle school professional development has been focused on literacy. One of the learnings that came out of conversations with other districts who were ahead of us in this work in year one was the importance of attending to that professional learning. So we have been doing that with both our general education teachers and our intervention teachers at the middle grade. So in fact, Monday is a PD day and our middle grades will also be participating in professional development aligned with that literacy work. We want to make sure that they have a strong foundation in that as we think about any potential shifts and then looking at and analyzing that curriculum to see if there are any changes that we need to be made. There were primary concerns about curriculum, as I understand it, coming out of that settlement agreement. It was not here at the time of the settlement agreement, but there was a large focus and concern on the TCR WOP program in the elementary grades.
Another nuance I would add is that the settlement agreement specifically called out a review of the K through five core reading program. It did not call out a review of the six through eight. What it did call for was supports to tier one curriculum for grades four through eight. So the six through eight curricular review was never part of the settlement agreement.
And that makes sense for our settlement agreement. As I think about just the overall support needed in our district, the reason why I asked that question about middle school is because if our students went through K through five with the challenges that they experienced from the curriculum and that was a level of concern, how do we then support them where they are in middle school is my overall question. And so I do have another question, so I don't want to stay here, but I think it is important for us to think about that from a curriculum instructional perspective. My next question is in regards to the instructional observation tool. So glad we have the tool. However, you know, it's been stated that feedback has not yet been provided to our teachers as it relates to this observation tool. And so what does our report identify in terms of a timeline for this to happen? I know that just, you know, as a K through 12 classroom teacher, I know that observation and feedback is really, really pivotal to the work that I do and to the work that all of our phenomenal educators do in the classroom every day and want to receive, want to receive that feedback. And so I also want to know, can this be included during the time of general instructional observations? Or must this stand alone by itself? Because I know that for our principals, for, you know, management level for our principals, this could be something that they could kill two birds with one stone doing. And so does the report provide the opportunity for that?
So I'm just reporting on the evidence I've received. And I've received no evidence of an observation feedback system at the school sites, although meeting with individual principals, there are some principals who've been doing this for years. However, I have not received evidence that shows it's happening across school sites. I've just seen that through informal conversations with principals.
And so your recommendation would be that we need to see it across, as you mentioned, across all of our, all of our school sites. And so although it is something that we said we're going to do as a district, we need to see the evidence of that at our school sites. And so it would be the responsibility for us as a district to provide the necessary tools to our really phenomenal principals to be able to give our great teachers an opportunity to receive that necessary feedback.
Yes, and I will say that that's work that we have started. So similarly, there has been, so one thing that we launched this year were instructional rounds. So we have teams of teachers who are meeting, meeting at school sites so that they can practice using the observation tools and work to calibrate on any responses that they might provide for a teacher. We feel like this is really important because we want to make sure that we've got alignment on what do these instructional practices look like? What types of feedback might we give to these teachers? And then more importantly, how are we collecting that information? Because it will be important for us as a system to understand where we have strengths and where we have areas to improve so that we can target our professional development in more strategic ways. So that's work that's underway.
Thank you. Director Shinosky?
Yeah, I'd like to ask something directly related to that. So when I was listening to you speak, what I understood was that the tool, the evaluation tool was used by principals. But now I'm understanding that there's a pool of evaluators. I'm just, yeah, I'm not quite sure I understand the evaluation like timeline or process or how it's connected with, like, I would imagine that it's also contractual in some way. So I'm just, I don't really understand the evaluation tool implementation. So maybe you could explain it a little bit to me.
I wouldn't call it an evaluation tool. I would call it an observation tool. So we, you all recall Director Albeck had shared, we've got a little mantra about learning it, supporting it, and then expecting it. So what we need to know is that if we have trained and provided professional learning opportunities for people to orient to key practices that are necessary for children to learn how to read, and if we are going to be adopting new curriculum materials and processes and then providing professional development time for them to understand how to use those materials, then we also have to understand whether or not they're implementing it. So it's an observation tool right now. We have been collaborating with our labor partners because we do, you know, we want, in this context of our emerging theory of change or improvement, ideal results require ideal behaviors. And if we want people to be using new strategies, one shared agreement this year, for example, is that phonics is going to happen every day in the elementary grades. Then what are the things that we're doing to support those behaviors? And then supporting a system that enables us to understand what's happening. And again, if there are areas that need additional support and training, that goes to the coaching and feedback components that Mr. Ellis is pointing out. It is still going to be a shift for us because many of our site-based specialists that have coached in their title have been spending a lot of their time serving as interventionists and pulling small groups. And that has implications for how schedules and things like that have been set up. So there's all sorts of things that we're attending to in the system. But if we want to calibrate on specific practices, it's important for us to have these observation tools so we know, you know, whether or not these practices are happening in classrooms. And then we can move into how well they are happening. So we want to be mindful that that in and of itself is a process.
Okay, thank you. I'm really glad to hear that about the coaching issue because I had talked to that. I've talked to Mr. Ellis about that before, and so that's really exciting to me. I think it's a really good opportunity for teachers to teach teachers and learn from teachers and really get that practice going at school sites. And I hope that we also are considering cross-school sites with some of those coaching. The other thing that was pointed out in this report that I'm excited about is the how to lead a change initiative. I think that's really important so that all the work that's being done this three years on literacy, we can gear up and do a lot of this work with our math and we can continue to improve and assess and change. And I think that that can be really hard in education. And so, yeah, we can be really sticky as teachers. So I'm just really excited to see that called out. And that's it. Thanks.
Director Basadov?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for your thorough presentation. And I was also just wanted to give the district staff a shout out because I do see improvements in terms of accountability on how case managers are writing IEP reading goals. And so I just wanted to give that a shout out and thank you for your hard work. And a lot of professional development goes into that, so thank you. And I have a question, I'm just curious, Mr. Ellis. At sites where there's a high number of English language learners, like King, Slega Mendez, and Longfellow, how are we doing in terms of implementation? Is there anything that you've noticed that you would want to flag for the board? And I know that's not specific, very specifically called out in this report, but I'm just wondering if you, if you have anything for us that you'd want us to consider.
Not specifically for those schools, partially because I haven't received evidence that is site-specific. I have also not received evidence specific to certain student populations. So I can't really speak to that. But hopefully, when I do start receiving more specific implementation of data, then I can speak a bit more to that.
I'll ask the Associate Superintendent.
So what I, what I will say is, we have been looking at data across program groups and sharing that with the board. You saw that in our October data presentation. And we will be coming back to you for our mid-year data presentation in February. What we have been including in the quarterly reports, and so the quarter 10 Literacy Action Plan Report is on this agenda, are our STAR and DIBELS data. So you will see window one, which was the fall administration of STAR and DIBELS. So back to the screening assessment, three times a year, assessment windows that Mr. Ellis was referring to. So in the appendix of that quarter 10 report, you, we do have grade level data by ethnicity and by program for the STAR and DIBELS reports, K through eight.
Great, thank you. And I take it that the, on the accountability summary that was presented in terms of our progress, like when we talk about like special education and how case managers are writing, improving the literacy goals, that happens for students that are duly identified, right? That are like English learners and sped students. So they are also receiving those improved reading goals. Great, thank you.
I mean, your points well taken, though. Once we have data that's broken down by site level and ethnicity and program, I mean, that's the kind of data we want to be looking at, but I haven't received that data yet.
Director Coy?
Thank you. Thank you so much for your report. I really appreciate the emphasis at this stage in the, in the process on sustainability and on the, the change management challenges and how accountability and professional learning and leadership and program supports are so critical for sustaining all the work. I think I understood from your exchange with President Brown that there is quite a bit of consistency and fidelity in our tier one assessments, but not so much in tier two and tier three, correct?
Yes.
I'm curious, from a change management perspective, if there's something we can learn from those, from that consistency in our tier one assessments that can inform how we improve the consistency in our tier two and tier three assessments?
Right, I think it's accountability. When it comes to tier one assessments, the district literacy coordinators have been checking to see who's submitted their data. When it comes to tier two and tier three, there's not been one point person looking at each site and then providing specific feedback to, for example, interventionists providing tier two intervention who are not progress monitoring every two to three weeks. So one question I did have was, who is supervising the collection of data for the tier two assessment screening, but also for the tier three?
Great, that's really helpful. I guess my other, I love change management. So my, my other change management question is really thinking about principals as instructional leaders and the ones who need to lead the next phase of this change. I guess I'm just, I'm curious if you see any particular challenges or barriers that you want to name in that realm?
Yes, I would love to. I have met with principals multiple times and this is a literacy initiative. And many times, the principals who feel the most confident leading through this instructional change have some type of a literacy background, a special ed background. However, that's not all your principals. We always have principals who might have taught math at the middle school and are now in charge of an elementary school. So what I found is the principals who have a strong literacy background from their teaching have been leaders when it comes to accountability. However, some of the principals who may not feel as confident in their leadership skills around literacy may be lagging a bit due to their lack of confidence in the subject matter.
That's such an interesting reflection because I heard you saying that up to this point, a lot of the training for principals has been in content, in literacy. And you're suggesting that now the training should shift to more about leading change rather than the literacy content. But it sounds like they still need literacy content support as well.
In relation to change.
Right. But it's all.
Some of those principal meetings, there's a lot of content knowledge. However, there's not a lot of follow-through with next steps was one of my noticings. So that's kind of the change management piece connected to the content learning.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Just want to say thank you to you for bringing this thorough presentation and also for the team here at the district in putting this in place. Just a couple of references to, to items that my colleagues, I think, have already raised. It's the coaching and the team-based learning for efficacious implementation across the district. There's been concerns raised about traction at the different schools. And as you pointed out, it's common at this phase to often have lots of opportunity for traction improvement across the schools. And it sounds like this is what we're really emphasizing, but this observation feedback aspect, but team-based learning or coach, what we're calling coaching with principals involved is really important. And I, and I support the other reflection upon that. And also disaggregated data, of course, to make sure that our targeting is, and our data is appropriately granular, depending on the student populations that we have here in Berkeley, which are quite diverse. And finally, is there, is there any observations on a notion of like monitoring extension? Guess if you may only question in terms of timeframes for your ability to continue to do what you're doing? Thank you.
In terms of monitoring extensions, that would be when we get to that, which is the final report. That would be based more around specific actions where there is still minimal progress. So that's a possibility. Monitoring for the whole literacy improvement program, extending that would not make much sense since it wouldn't be a good use of time. But targeted monitoring of specific actions might be needed, but we'll know more. There's still a few months and the site level evidence will be really helpful in determining if there needs to be some type of extension on specific actions or not.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Mr. Ellis, I think we've reached the end of our presentation and our questions from the board. So thank you so much for your ongoing monitoring support that you provide to the district and for your partnership. I think it's so meaningful that you are not just monitoring us, but really partnering with us to make sure that this literacy action plan is one that benefits all of our students. So thank you very much. We appreciate your time. Next, we will move to item 15.2, our special education mid-year summary. I'd like to invite Associate Superintendent Hogan Dyke as well as
I'd like to invite Associate Superintendent Hogan-Dyke, as well as Special Education Director Sean Mancenger, to present at this time.
Good evening, board and colleagues. Is are you controlling the slides, or am I? I see it. Just want to make sure. Okay.
Got it. Okay, we're going to go ahead and get started. So, good evening, board, members of the public superintendent and staff. We're here to present a mid-year summary on special education work. This summary has been traditionally, or at least I say traditionally, this is my year two and a half in the spring. But we wanted to align this presentation to fronts. One is January is Disability Awareness Month, and we wanted to be able to sync this presentation to highlight some of the activities that are happening there. And also because we know that there are, we are headed into a new budget balancing season, and it is important as part of this presentation to understand the fiscal landscape for the work that we do to serve our students with IEPs. This all sits in the context of our district mission to enable and inspire our diverse student body to achieve academic excellence and make positive contributions to the world. So tonight, we are going to, we're going to give a little information about the students we serve in this area of work, the cost drivers for special education services, and some of the work that our executive director Sean Mancenger here and his team have been doing to work on cost containment. It's related to our district mission. We have a special education mission, and we are, sorry, I put some notes there. Just making sure that the Special Education Department is aligned to create and sustain an educational community where students with exceptionalities are welcomed, valued, and appropriately supported in ways that enable them to learn and achieve. We have articulated commitments to partner and engage our IEP teams, which is inclusive of our school staff, our families, and our students, to support the inclusion of students in IEPs in our classroom every day. And we also want to acknowledge that the work of our Special Education Department to support our students with IEPs is aligned to our strategic plan pillars, which you see there on the right, and our L cap goals that are on the left, and other BUSD initiatives that aim to strengthen inclusion and inclusive practices and to build toward independence. Tonight, we will be touching on a number of our focus areas, including the ways that we support students toward academic excellence and wellness and belonging, and we'll share the current fiscal landscape and work that we're doing toward managing costs responsibly. And with that, I will turn it over to Sean.
Jill, so the first thing we want to do is just get a bearing of who our students are. And the most important thing to remember is that up here are just numbers, percentages. Each one of those, those numbers up there is an individual student with a complex relationship with the education system, and are each unique, which is the challenge with all of our students, as each IEP is individual. So we have roughly, you know, depending on when this data was pulled a few days ago, we could have other kids that have joined in special education. We have 1,158 students in special education. There's about 9,200 students total in our district, which makes us at 13%. So we have seen an increase from last year, which was about 12%. Our state average is 14%, and our federal average is 15%. So we have seen an increase in the rise of special education percentages across in our own district, across the county, as well as across our nation. Down below here, you'll see the breakout of our different disability categories and numbers by race. Of course, the X is there. If there's any student that's under 10, we typically do not report out those numbers, just for confidentiality reasons. So it's important for us to just get a glimpse into the world we're kind of dealing with now, where we have a drop in numbers overall for students, but we have an increase in special education numbers, which has impacts on us fiscally, as well as our ability to serve students well. Next slide. All right, so this just highlights a little bit more about the students with disabilities numbers. It's rising at a faster pace than enrollment, really across our county, but also across our state and across, and across really our nation as well. So you could just see the different numbers of percentages for different districts across our, across our landscape. And you could see that some are up to almost 20%, which is quite a huge number for a district to be dealing with. So it's it's important to understand where our most common referrals are coming for special education. One is our reading skill challenges, two are behavioral challenges, and three are socio-emotional challenges. So it's also important to understand in the context that that special education does not operate in its own little bubble. We are a service that we provide that are additional to what students should be getting at Tier 1. As you know, we've said this many times, general education student first, and then they have an IEP. So our California, we even have this codified in our California code that people shall be referred for special education instruction and services only after the resources of the regular education program have been considered and where appropriate utilized. I also want to make sure that we understand that special education is a service. It is not a place. It's not a separate school. It's not a separate subject. And students with IEPs are not those kids. They are our kids, all of our kids. So these are different areas that we are always looking at to improve our services, to ensure that we have strong Tier 1 and 2 and 3 services before we, before referrals come for reading or behavioral socio-emotional challenges. This is important to understand. This particular table is, it shows that percentage of total special education expenditure supported by state, federal, and local funds. And you can see from the right-hand side from 2014 to 2015, all the way up to 21, 22, that the brunt of what's big, special education support is coming from local tax dollars, which means that if we have less coming from state and federal, we are, we are bearing the brunt of those costs, which, you know, can get very challenging, especially when our state revenue is insufficient to meet those growing costs. Down below, I put a little link that you might be interested in. That really goes a little bit deeper into the cost, cost information. But as you can see, the federal government in 2014, 15 was given 11%. At 2021, 22, it's 8%. And if we go back to IDEA, when it started in 1975, the federal government had promised much more than that, and we still have not received it, no matter if it's a Democrat or Republican in office. All right, so this particular table is showing our actuals from the last four years, 2021. I put a little red box around it so that you could differentiate that from 2024, 25, where they have the adopted budget, as well as the first interim budget. And one thing to notice is that our increase of the general fund contribution had already, was already, had already increased. If you look from general fund contribution line across the board there, we started out at $28,98,404,000. And within the first interim, we added an additional $1.4 million. And some of these cost drivers, which I'll talk a little bit more, are one-to-one services from non-public agencies, and also an increase in non-public school placements over this last year. We did have a decrease last year in our non-public school placements, but this year we've seen a bit of an increase. We also saw, we also saw costs increase at our non-public agencies and non-public schools. They actually had a higher COLA than we had. They got 8% COLA, while we got a 0.3, I think, per COLA. What is it now? It changed. Yeah. 0.7. So, so I did do a lot of hustling out there and asking NPAs and MPS is like, hey, I noticed you did an 8%. Do you think you could decrease that? And some, a couple did. So, but that was also a part of the increase in prices. This this particular table is just essentially the previous table, and it's put in graph form. So you can see one of our, this purple line that's going up there is showing our number of FTE that has grown over the years. Part of that is due to, we have capped caseloads and capped assessments, so we've had to hire additional case managers. Last year, we hired 4.0 additional case managers to help keep caseloads low and to beat our contract obligations with our unions. In addition, some of these are replacing contractor positions that we never had internal positions or so we basically created those positions in order for that increase. And some of it also is our addition of instructional aids that we've had to add over time, especially after COVID, due to increased, increased behavioral needs or or health needs. So you can see again, if you look here, the blue line going up, those are employee costs, contractual costs that go up. And you can see the orange line here that went from NPA cost. We had a dip. Well, we had a bit of a raise for NPA costs. And then, as you can see from adopted budget, the first interim, we've had that increase. And non-public schools is the next one, and you see that we've kind of done a little up and down pattern over the years, depending on the students that we get in our district. And there has been a slight increase over this last first interim. So so, you know, I think it proves us to always bring this up because it's very easy for us as individuals, as well as a system, to say, well, why is special education costing so much? Why does it keep on going up? But it's really important to understand that a special education department does not control all the costs associated with operating programs for our students with disabilities. And all the evidence shows that the best way that we lower costs and cost containment is through really strong multi-tiered systems of support, which we obviously are working on with the Literacy Action Plan. And we work very closely with our partners and student services to ensure that there's good socio-emotional programs. I mean, one thing we did is we brought all of our, our counseling in-house. We used to depend, when I came here, we depended 100% on outside counselors to come in. And now all of our school psychologists are doing all of our counseling and therapy services within our own district, which is great because it creates a more of a cohesive team at our school sites because they're not just outsiders coming in and dropping by and leaving. They're embedded at the sites and working closely and making sure that all of these services are connected together. So this is, this is work that we continue to do as a whole team and under our amazing leadership. I think we've made some good headway over the years, and we have a lot more work to do. Continuous improvement, as you see this on every slide and every presentation we do. This is especially true for special education and all of our IEPs, as well as any of the professional development we are delivering. What are we trying to improve? What changes might we make and why? And how will we know if those changes led to improvement? So we are always constantly in a continuous model for improvement. So some of our big cost drivers for special education are, of course, non-public school placements, our use of non-public agency folks, our legal settlements, as well as later labor costs and additional FTE. There are many more other costs in special education, including technology for, not only for our, our school psychologists and our SO, our speech and language therapists. They have to have apples. They can't have just your typical regular commuter, whatever you call those, what our kids have. Thank you. Is, so, and there's also assessment protocols we need to buy. So there are a lot of costs that come with special education, but these are four of our biggest drivers. So I wanted to do, go over some of the strategies that we're doing for cost containment. I won't go over them all, but maybe you'll pick one that you want to ask questions about. So one I already mentioned was our tiered counseling support by school psychologist. So we're also serving general education students in order to help avoid them from possibly needing an IEP. We have done a tremendous amount of work in getting all of our case managers trained in Orton-Gillingham, as well as doing DIBELS and progress monitoring. And the next level we're moving to now is actually doing that tracking of Tier 3 services in EduClimber and actually at that site level to ensure all of our case managers are delivering those Tier 3 or Tier 2 services either on a two- to three-week basis or a weekly basis. We developed a special day class for 3 through 5 students, which has saved us approximately $700,000. We have seven students in there, and if all those students were go to go to a non-public school, that would be around $700,000 for each of those students. And we're hoping in this next year, I'm writing up a proposal for potential TK through 2 SDC, so that we have a pathway for our students from the lower grades. We also have lots of trainings from our behaviorists and our augmented alternative communication team and our assistive technology team. And these are all proactive measures we do to ensure that our, our student with more severe disabilities are able to communicate well and that there's understanding that their behavior is always communication and that the better that we learn that, the better, the easier, the better we'll deal with our, our students, keep them in class. Non-public agency, one of the big areas we did this year is we did, I did an I audit at each of the sites. And what that looked like was essentially listing all the students at the site that are receiving any instructional aid support and putting like what, what amount of SAI, specialized act of instruction they're getting, and also looking at other things like what level of trainings on building independence have you done at your sites? So one thing we've seen this year is a huge increase in the amount of professional development at the site level for our team. So we have our speech and language therapists, our BCBAs, our behaviorists, as well as our, our other specialized occupational therapies, all delivering different instructional, instructional professional involvement at each of the site level. And this is all in the, in the larger umbrella of how do we build independence for our children? Because we know that instructional aids, if we're not careful, can actually build dependence. So we, we want to make sure that our aides are also receiving professional development, which they are. And this coming Professional Development Day, we'll have all of our instructional aids, our, our mods of your teachers, as well as our mild mod teachers, all in the same room for that morning, which has happened for quite a while, so that there's relationship building. And then also, how do we work, how do you all work and pivot as a team to work with each other in delivering specialized academic instruction? In the future, we'd love to see our general education teachers also in that room. But for the last few trainings, we have had our special education teachers at the, at the table with our general education teachers. But we also want the instructional aids built in there as well. So other stuff we're going through, through non-public agencies, professional, or development of internal positions versus contractors, which I mentioned earlier, as well as utilizing shared IAs versus one-to-one. So if there's an instructional aid in the classroom, they can support two or three students, depending on their level of disability. Legal settlements, of course, one of the big things is working with families closely. Our Disability Equity and Special Education Advisory Committee that was kicked off. We're having our second meeting tomorrow. We had a little postponement in December, but we're back on track. Regular PD and coaching from our TSAs and our supervisors at sites. Monthly principal supervisor case management discussions to be proactive about what are the families we're struggling with. And also, let's look a little closer at some of the, at our case managers. Um, and also let's look a little closer at some of the, uh, at our case managers, um, and, and how they're serving, um, students. And then of course, we do a lot of alternative dispute resolution with families to avoid those legal costs and try to keep lawyers out of the, um, out of the picture as long as we can. And, and lastly, for, uh, um, additional FTE, um, you know, labor costs, we know one thing that, um, uh, BOSD has been, um, really, uh, put a lot of emphasis on is creating lower caseloads. Um, we're very lucky to have our BSEP funds, um, as, as well as our bear funds that we can have, um, instructional, um, coaches that work with our, um, teams and also help do assessments and also do coaching at the sites. All right. So additional highlights, I'd like to, um, keep on for, I got two buttons here. Uh, additional highlights, um, definitely want to highlight our disability awareness month. And if you click on that link, of course, it'll take you to our website with all the different, um, resources and activities. But one, uh, big area that I want to highlight is that we're having a student-led roundtable on inclusion and experience this Monday coming up. So I'm extremely excited about that. I want to give a little shout out to, uh, our BHA, uh, Berkeley High School senior Andrew, uh, Regan, um, and his mother Nicole Chabot, who have really led this process and helped organize and, um, and I'm, I'm very excited to, uh, be a listener and learn from our students and staff, um, who have disabilities that are willing to get up in, in front of a, uh, um, the community and talk about how their disabilities have, um, and their experiences, uh, and how they navigate this world. We also have our lifting up BOSD staff voices, um, posters that we've posted around, um, which I also want to give a huge shout out because I don't think it's easy for, um, for folks to come out and say, hey, I have a disability. Um, so, and, um, that's a, you know, that's a, that's a, it's a big thing to put out there. So, uh, every school has activities planned, um, for disability awareness month. I've, I've collected a lot of, um, that data from them and there anything from read aloud presentations. A long fellow recently had an alumni, uh, with dyslexia that came back, um, and gave a talk to our students. Um, and how she's persevered, um, through, um, her career. Um, I think she's a lawyer. I also want to really highlight our, um, like expansion or our implementation of our, our alternative, uh, pathway to the diploma with access to our, our home base students, our extensive support needs. Extensive support needs is the new language for moderate severe, mod severe. You'll hear me say mod severe just because that's, I'm used to it, but technically it's extensive support needs now. And these students are, it's all the way from nine through 12. It's based on IP team decisions, which includes the parent recommendation. Um, and we actually have five students on track, um, for path, for this diploma pathway for 2024, 25, which is a year ahead of, um, what we're required from the state. So I'm very happy and very, and been very proud of that team for the work they've done in improving. And recently we, there was a, uh, meeting with our home base and the parents and about, uh, 20 parents showed up. So, um, we've done that two or three times now. So we've, we found that they didn't feel like they had a strong community together to support each other. And having these meetings, um, has helped bring those families together. Uh, I also want to highlight, uh, the expansion of the transition support services. And if you link on, um, click on that link, you'll see a PowerPoint that they, um, did for, um, for our, uh, our department of rehabilitation. And the department of rehabilitation said that we got an A plus. Um, and they also said, uh, our BOSD's, uh, transitions to support services. And this is especially, this is like helping students figure out their college pathway, find, uh, positions, um, work positions within our community in order to prepare themselves, um, for, um, careers they want to go into. But they said, uh, it's a shining light, an exemplary program in the state of California. So we're very happy and very proud of, um, of our, um, transition teachers. Uh, and lastly, uh, I want to, uh, talk about the counseling rich program. I think you all know that we had Seneca leading this program in the past and we made the big leap. Um, after many years of having them there to basically hire our own internal staff, our own social workers, which is another reason why our FTE increased as well, because we hired two internal, um, social workers. And what we've seen overall is we've had a large increase in attendance from our students. We've also seen, uh, a large increase in behaviors, um, and pending learning. So we're, uh, we got lots of work still to do, but I'm very happy with, uh, um, the work that our teams have been doing at the sites with the teachers. Questions from you, but I do want to highlight, uh, oh, what happened to the?
You're cut off.
That's right. I could read it off the thing. Uh, so essentially I just want to, you know, Ed Roberts, the father of independent living movement here in Berkeley, uh, his mother, uh, just passed as well, who was also a huge advocate for, um, uh, independent living movement. Uh, but he says disability is strength. Our number one issue is still old attitudes towards us. And these old attitudes sees us as helpless and unable. And disability can make you very strong and very able. Um, so that's certainly our mantra as we move forward and do this work. Questions?
Thank you, uh, so much for your presentation. Uh, we have about four minutes and 52 seconds left for questions. So I'll begin with Director Vasudev and then move to Director Shinosky.
Thank you so much. Um, for the presentation. I especially like that you gave a shout out to the disability equity and special education advisory committee and their work. I think, um, it's really important that we continue to have these proactive partnerships with our families. And ending it on the fact that, you know, students with, uh, disabilities, um, are amazing and they're our strength. And they make me a better board member and they make us better educators. So thank you so much for flagging that. I wanted to chat about just one, how we're taking input from this committee. And I know we've only had one meeting, but something that was brought up at that meeting from our educators that I thought was, um, really innovative was the use of student-led IEPs in other districts in the Bay Area and how we can move towards that model. And, um, one of our BHS educators mentioned that that's something that she's seen be very successful and also like reducing, um, you know, kind of IEP conflicts, because we better, when you empower students to speak about their disability and their specific needs, it does bring, uh, you know, both the district and the parents, um, closer together in that process. So one, our traction around that and movement towards that that came from the committee. And two, I would love to see numbers for the use of alternative dispute resolution. I think that's wonderful that you highlighted that as a goal of the sped department. Would love to see numbers and the, um, practical work that we're doing to move there in terms of professional development for our case managers. And making sure that that's offered as part of the IEP process, because I think that's really important and would definitely help reduce some of the legal costs that we're seeing. So those are my two questions. Thank you.
Uh, so the first, as far as, uh, student-led IEPs, certainly that happens in our district. We actually have a PowerPoint template that we've given all our case managers to do that. Has there been a concerted effort across the board to do that? Um, no, but now that you're bringing it up, I'll start talking to my supervisors about it. Uh, we have done an incredible amount of work, um, for our literacy action plan. Um, so, you know, we have to be careful about how many things we lay upon our, our case managers as PD, but, um, I think that's, uh, it, it's, it's not, even if you have a, a student come, a, a lower grade student or something come for five minutes to talk about their strengths. It can be quite powerful. And I know that it does happen, um, on occasion, but it's not something we're seeing across the board. And, um, and certainly I can, uh, I'll raise that with case managers and our supervisors and our.
And, and just to add to that, um, Director Vasadev, um, you asked about how are we kind of collecting input from that committee? As you mentioned, that was the only, the first meeting just happened a while ago. We have our second meeting tomorrow. But one of the things that the committee, uh, started to engage in the first meeting was really starting to align around what they want the priorities or the folk I to be for the committee for the school year. We haven't landed. There were a lot of great ideas, but we, we want to kind of, um, find to that at the next meeting and the third meeting. Cause we are really trying to push, um, all of our committees to be really clear about their priorities and folk I. So that there actually can be more momentum and movement and really focused approach to the changes that we're trying to make. Um, so I haven't personally heard that one, but we will definitely, as, uh, executive director, uh, Manzinger said, take that into account. But definitely come back to the board, um, with, with the recommendations and the priorities at the very least of that committee. So.
And I, I'm sorry, what was your second question?
Alternative dispute resolution, loved to have seen as a cost mitigation strategy and wanted to know how we're increasing and if we have statistics on that.
Yes, our, our, uh, our SLP director collects that regularly, so I can provide that data. Welcome.
Yeah. First I want to correct an, um, oversight of mine. So I did not give you or your, um, special ed team a shout out on the literacy action plan work. And so I would like to, um, correct that. Thank you for all the heavy lifting you've done with that work as well. And then I have two quick questions. One is on slide eight. There was a big jump from 2021 to 2122, a 9.44% increase in the cost. And we had that listing of like various things that cause a general increase, but I'm wondering that one was particularly sharp. And is there a particular reason that it was so high?
From, I'm sorry, the cost from 2021 to 2022?
From 2021, 20 slash 21.
Right.
To 21.
So that was after COVID and that was basically coming back after those.
Was it more students?
Uh, not necessarily more students, but more intense, uh, needs. So there was a sharp increase in the number of instructional aids to support, um, students, because they were, you know, out for an entire year. I mean, some, as much as we tried, we are obviously doing a lot of virtual, um, but we also know there were certain students who had troubles accessing that.
And then also, um, the increase in the, um, non-public agency placements. So do you know why that's happening and what specifically we can, we're doing to?
Yeah. So.
Minimize that.
Part of it is that we don't, like other districts, we don't have a, um, a continuum of services as we've focused on inclusion. So we don't have what other districts have, like special day classes, um, in multiple schools. Uh, and we don't have a mild mod special day class. We only have one, three through five, um, special day class. So that's part of it. So we don't have a, um, a landing spot for students who are struggling within our general education environments. So that's one area. So that's why we developed the three through five, um, SDC, um, special day class at, um, at, uh, Malcolm X. And we're hoping, um, I'm hoping and will be proposing it to, um, to, uh, my team of trying to develop a TK through two for next year. Um, to help for those students that, um, are struggling with, um, being in, inclusive in our, in our general ed classrooms. And the idea is always to go back to the least restrictive environment as possible. Uh, most of our, um, non-public, um, school placements are at the high school level. And there's a lot of, um, different things that help that are, um, a challenge. One is, um, space. We only have one large, uh, but we have two. We have our alternative school as well. Um, but we have basically a school with 30, 3,500 students at Berkeley High School. So, um, some of our students have a, a hard time, especially our internalizers, um, of being able to, um, operate in an environment like that. Um, I think we've also seen, seen a sharp increase in, um, uh, mental health and, um, and, um, from our, our, our older students. So we're seeing a rise in, you know, residential treatment centers and, and in non-public agencies. Um, so there are, uh, many, many factors, um, but we're always looking to, to, um, to bring those students back as soon as possible when we have that opportunity.
Um, my questions are, uh, kind of similar to, uh, Jennifer's. And so I'll jump, uh, right in. First of all, thank you for your presentation. I especially really appreciated, um, hearing the highlights and hearing all of the, um, upcoming events and the great things that are happening coming out of our, um, special education department. And so thank you for taking the time, um, to highlight those. And the various members of our communities who are helping, uh, to make those things happen. You already know that my question is around budget. And specifically, uh, you know, I just want to identify that we are not alone. I say this all the time, but we are not the only district who, uh, is seeing just challenging costs, um, as it relates, uh, to keeping up with our special education services. A lot of which, um, you already identified, um, has to do with the placement of, uh, students and MPS and NPAs. And I do know, I, I want to appreciate, um, the hiring of, uh, two, uh, new, um, two new, um, members of our community and wonder if, um, is it that we need to focus on, um, continuing to build our staff in the special education department? Not just build, because we talk a lot about building, um, the capacity of our staff who's already there. And we know that our staff members have gone through so many professional development trainings, that they are, uh, well-versed, that they have the, the mindset to serve our students well. Um, but is it that we need to increase our staff so that we, um, can minimize, um, the placements of our students going to NPAs and MPS? Now I want to be honest and identify that there are some circumstances, um, to which we cannot, um, you know, provide services within our, our school district. However, do we see ourselves, um, moving to a place where if we increase our staff, increase, uh, the specific staff that we have, we could, um, you know, keep some of our students in our school district?
Yeah, I think it's beyond staff. It's about building a program that will serve particular students. So for example, if we wanted to build a program for, um, our older students that have more internalized, um, um, behaviors, um, depression, suicidal ideation, then we'd want to create a program that, um, that has a space for them where they, um, could potentially, um, yes, they can attend classes, but when they're feeling that anxiety, they'd be able to go back to their particular class with their teacher to be able and, and, uh, therapist or, or social worker to help them, um, navigate those situations. Um, we do have, as you know, space issues and, and, and Berkeley Unified School District. So it's hard to, to find space to build certain programs out. Uh, we do try to place students within our SLP as much as possible, but since all of our other SLPs are going through the same experience right now where they have increased costs, um, challenges with hiring, um, folks, um, and also increased, um, behaviors and, and supports needed for students. Um, we're all kind of working on this together. So yes, I think building our own programs will help, um, with not having as many students go to non-public schools. Um, as far as non-public agencies, remember those are people that we're hiring to come into our school district. So, um, we've, we've done a pretty good job with, um, retaining our, um, special education staff. Last year was a little challenging. We had quite a few teachers that we had to hire. But this year feels like we're, we're doing much better. Um, as you know, there were some challenges at Berkeley High School last year, but, um, things have really, um, mellowed and strengthened there, um, over this year. So there's definitely room for growing our own staff internally. There's still some positions that I would like to build out that don't have matching FTE, um, due to, uh, they're just hard to, hard to staff positions. So we typically contract out, um, but I would like to see us build our own, our own staff here. And every year we add, uh, a few FTE to do that.
Um, so I'm hearing that they answer, uh, to one of the parts of the answers to my question. Uh, could be potentially that we do build out, um, our own staff with our FTE, even though knowing that those are hard to fill positions. I am interested, uh, in your idea of building out, um, our program. The last time we had a presentation, um, I asked a very, um, a specific question about rethinking and reimagining, um, our special education department, specifically thinking about programs. And so it is so interesting to hear, um, that response from you today, uh, which was a little different than, um, than, uh, the last presentation. And so I'm really delighted to hear that and would love to, um, kind of know a little bit more about, uh, what you are thinking or envisioning in terms of, uh, programs. I heard you, you make mention of, uh, how it could support our older students. And so, you know, have to go there, but maybe our students on the middle school and elementary school level.
Yeah. Well, like I said earlier, I'd like to build out a TK through two, um, special day class, um, for, um, so that we have a pathway going up. Uh, one thing to also recognize that, um, at the, uh, middle school level, what we did this year is we actually have core classes that we, we've, we've modeled it much like, um, Berkeley High School where we have a home base. So they spend, um, up to three classes, um, with, um, with their, um, special education teachers, getting more core instruction that they need. Um, and then of course still go out and into general education classrooms that they, that they take. Um, so that's a big change that we made from last year and we're, um, we don't have, um, all day, you know, special day classes, um, at the middle and high school level. Which, um, you know, is a, has its positives of course, um, but there are definitely students that we still struggle. But there are definitely students that we still struggle being able to spend time in general education classrooms due to the severity of their disability.
Thank you, Director Quin. I was going to ask some of the same questions. I'm also really interested in your ideas around developing new programs to serve students who were not currently serving well and sending to MPSs. I'm really excited about what you're saying about high school students who are struggling with depression and mental health issues and internalized challenges and finding some different ways to serve those kids. I hope that you can make that happen. On a related note, a question that came up for me is around attendance related because many of those students struggle with attendance. I was looking at some of our attendance data and it looks like students with disabilities is one of our groups that has some pretty low attendance rates. I'm wondering if you have any work that you're doing to try to improve attendance for our students with IEPs?
Yeah, we work very closely with Dr. Shelley from Student Services. He had some initiatives last year around getting more students to school and doing trophies and whatnot at sites. So that work is continuing. And of course, at all of our IEPs, any student that is not attending on a regular basis, we hold IEP meetings with the family to talk about, you know, how can we support? We work with our family liaisons at the site. There's a, one particular case we're working right now, a student that's been out for over a year. And we've had a hard time finding placement for him. And now we're actually working with the family and we've found a place that we think we're going to be able to place. And the family liaison is taking the lead because they have the best relationship with that particular family member. So it's, was there a second question?
No, I think that's it. Just, yeah. It's late. You captured it.
Director Chang, Vice President Chang, please forgive me.
Okay. Thank you so much, President. I appreciate the, the amount of effort that's gone into building capacity. You're working in a complex environment. SPED is always a complex environment. In the context of capacity building, I also appreciate, and we've talked about this here previously, I believe, with adding additional staff, the 4.0 additional case managers last year, which you pointed out, replaced contractors is an important direction. You know, of course.
Can I just make a correction? So the 4.0 additional FT was not replacing contractors. That 4.0 additional FT was because we had sites that were going over. So our mild mod, our mild moderate caseloads are at 21 and our moderate severe caseloads are at 10 or 11. So we were having sites that are going, we had a little bubble in the lower grades. So due to that, we had to bring on additional FT to be able to meet those contract obligations so that our case managers didn't have like 35 kids on their caseload.
Thank you to address the contract obligations. So I guess associated with that question in terms of capacity building in a context of challenging budget environments, what are some of the challenges in 2025 that you see in terms of hiring SPED employees? In particular, in a context where sometimes it can be more available to hire contract employees?
Yeah. Well, we work very closely with human resources. We visited last year, I actually went myself to a couple of job fairs to help drum up some folks. One thing that I found is the best way is really word of mouth. When you have case managers that are happy, they talk to their friends. The reason why we don't have trouble getting any school psychologists in our district is because we've created such a fantastic team led by one of our supervisors, Shana Stumfig, that they've, they've basically, people are clamoring to come here now, school psychologists, because they like the model that we're using. So that's one area. We certainly reach out to universities, programs. Sam, do you want to add?
I just wanted to add that the ACOE, the Alameda Accounting Office of Ed, has just launched a para-institute, which is to help prepare para-professionals like our special ed assistants. And we actually have five people who've already expressed interest in joining our district. And so our personnel commission is reaching out to those five people to get them on board. But that's also one of the aspects of working both, Associate Superintendent Hugendike and myself have worked very closely with ACOE and about expressing what our needs are as a district so that they can help support those things.
We also have our own internal program, and I just learned from Kitty McCarthy yesterday that we have a graduate, I think, in the pipeline who was a para for a very long time and is now becoming credentialed to be a special education teacher. So it's really exciting.
Yeah, our B-PAC program has been very beneficial. It's Berkeley PAC. It's the grant we get from the state to help our classified employees become teachers. And we've hired six of our graduates and every year we look to see if we have new graduates that we can hire. So.
That's great. Thank you so much. Those pathways are so important. And it does sound like based upon prior conversations over the last two years, a year and a half that have been on the board, that there's some capacity building here and opportunities and improvements. I guess one more question, you know, in terms of building that capacity, you know, they could, it could always be a multifactorial type of approach, not just one solution, of course. And you've raised programmatic based approaches, including like a wish list of a special day class, which is interesting. I'd like to hear more about that and continuing in the future as well. But in terms of programmatic options that we have ready with regard to mental health issues, which as you noted with our more mature students, older students in the high school in particular, that there's a lot of internalized type of SPED issues. How have, how has your, your program engaged with the wellness center at BHS? And has that been a useful space for that kind of programmatic?
Absolutely. We've had tours, our home bases have done tours there to prepare them to, you know, how do you use this space in a responsible and a manner, in a way that is, can actually help you? So yes, we've worked very closely with them. We've also, you know, as, as we've said, we have a team of school psychologists and social workers there that are providing tiered supports to students and also to our general education students as well. They'll do like maybe a six, seven week cycle in order to support them and help them so that, you know, it, it would be nice to see increased mental health support services on the general education side at Berkeley High School as well. And I know that's in the works and there's Dr. Shelley and his team is working on that. But it's, even before COVID, we saw from the research that there were spiked increases and, and students with suicidal ideation and depression. Partly, I think that's due to our social media world that they're living in. And so it's, we're continuing to work on that. We've seen, we've seen a marked improvement this year from our teams. One of the big areas that we really worked on was getting our general education and our special education administrators to work more closely at not, not departmentalize our special education program, which can be very easy to do and if you're not careful about that. So we've, you know, I meet with Juan Regozza once a month with our, our two supervisors there to ensure that we're addressing the needs of students there. And we've also built out a cost team, a model there at the high school that Doreen Bracamontes has led the effort on that so that we can ensure that we're looking at data and keeping track of students who might be, their grades dipping or, or they're having socio-emotional issues in class or, or maybe not attendance and not showing up. So it's a team effort and the more collective and approach we take with a multi-tiered system support lens, I think we're going to see a lot more, hopefully, happy children that are enjoying learning.
Yeah, I think so. It's a really exciting development with the Wellness Center. On one follow-up, quick follow-up, last question. And with our prior conversations regarding, you know, within the literacy context around like coaching and peer-based learning, the folks who are doing such a great job at the Wellness Center, do they also engage in, with other schools to pull them in to some form of wellness model on their campuses in the district?
Do you mean from like Berkeley High School to some middle schools, things like that? I'm not, I'm not aware of that right now. I know that Rosa Parks has a wellness center there that they contract with. But otherwise, every site working through Dr. Shelley has, has supports. I believe every site has mental health supports for both general education and special education students. But one area that we're always building is how do we ensure that those teams are working together so that we can provide those tiered support to students? What we don't want is, well, they're, they have an IEP, so they always have to go to a, a school psychologist, you know. We should, and, and also if this general education students needs a short cycle of intervention, our school psychologists are at the site and willing to do and support that too. So we're not creating that bifurcation that happens between just because somebody has an IEP, suddenly they're labeled and, oh, they're only getting services over here. And same with general education students. Or we should be capitalizing on the strength that our, of special education teachers and school psychologists and occupational therapists have so that they're working with the whole population. And we especially see that with our, our assistive technology access. We wrote, we worked with the technology department and we had a slew of iPads that were brought to the sites that general education and special education students can utilize in order to improve their, you know, reading and build those tools out that they need.
Thank you so much.
We are almost done, President. Sorry. Just wanted to clarify, Vice, Vice President Chang, just to not cause confusion for the public, there's a ton of resources that we have at our school sites, both in the Wellness Center and outside the Wellness Center. The school, the school sites are not typically in the Wellness Center as a service. And so I just wanted, didn't want folks to walk away and hear that. And we're happy to come back and bring staff to talk to you about the services that are provided in that center and how they're in support, but also how they're very distinct.
Thank you.
Thanks for the clarification. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your presentation and for your ongoing work. We appreciate you. We are happy to have your support in our district and happy to see our special education department thriving. So thank you for your presentation. At this time, we will move to extended public comment. I do have one card that is green for extended public comment, but I no longer see the commenter in the audience. And so Ms. Shawris, do we have anyone who is online? We have two people who are online. We'll give each of those public commenters one minute to speak at this time. And so if you could please promote them, my computer has died, so I'm not able to do so. I'm sorry. I apologize. Did I set the original public comment time online for online speakers for two minutes, I believe, earlier? So let's keep that. Please forgive me. Two minutes for each speaker.
Hi, can I speak now?
Yes. Hi, welcome.
Hi. My name is Eliza No. I'm commenting on the literacy action plan. First, agenda item 16.2 is supposed to be the LAP 10th quarter report. Instead, you posted the October 2024, quarter nine report. Please post the 10th quarter LAP report. Second, I urge BUSD to extend monitoring of the LAP beyond this year. This is necessary to sustain the changes put into place. But more importantly, this is necessary to implement required changes in the first place at many school sites. The court monitor report stated, quote, "It is clear that a handful of Berkeley schools have fully embraced the spirit of the settlement agreement. And it is also clear that there are school sites that have not yet implemented many of the changes detailed in the LAP," end quote. A handful of Berkeley schools means five or fewer school sites have fully embraced the settlement agreement. School sites that have not yet implemented many of the changes means that implementation of LAP requirements is not happening somewhere. There are only four months remaining in this LAP year. If BUSD is not already implementing many of the required changes, then it is doubtful the district will complete them this academic year. To sustain change, BUSD must consistently institutionalize the MTSS model across all tiers. In the monitor report, it is clear that special education and reading support teachers are still primarily responsible for screening, monitoring, and supporting struggling readers. Humanities teachers need more than diagnostic plans in merely four sessions of communities of practice to engage in authentic cross-tier collaboration in the middle schools, for example. The SPED presentation tonight also informed us of the importance of the effective MTSS. SPED correctly asserted that, quote, "The degree to which, to which an LEA implements an MTSS with fidelity plays a key role in the outcomes for students, the rate of referrals to special education, and ultimately the cost."
This evening, I apologize for cutting you off. I'm so sorry. There are two minutes has gone up. But please feel free to email the rest of your comments to the Board of Education. And thank you for taking the time to stay for the meeting to make those comments. We will go to the next public commenter. Again, as you are on Zoom, if you would like, you'll see that our video shows the timer in the background. And so if you would just like to glance over and look at that to know how much more time you have.
Hi, I don't know if you can hear me. This is Nemo Tabina.
Yes, Nemo, so we can hear you. Welcome.
Hi. First, I just want to thank Superintendent and Jennifer for, sorry. Anyway, you know who you are. Just thank you for your dedication to answering families' questions at Longfellow. I did want to speak to the board tonight about an issue with the scoreboard at the West Campus Gym for Longfellow games. If the, if the scoreboard is not fixed, then our basketball cannot have host home games there. So we are asking that the, that the scoreboard be fixed. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you as well. Are there any extended board member comments this evening? Hearing that, I will call for an adjournment at 10:33 PM. Thank you all. We'll see you again on February 5.